I call to order the December 18, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Bowers.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Messer.
Present.
Mr. Morosky.
Here.
President Jones.
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, November 18, 2019, and the business meeting, November 18, 2019.
So moves.
Second?
Second. Who's second? Mr. Messer. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Mr. Davis, please present the November 21, 2019 Policy Committee Meeting Report.
We want to thank the school board school for joining us at the November 21 Policy Committee Meeting where we reviewed policies that, Policy 2272, several of the policies you will hear today, brought forward with resolution, College Credit Plus, Probation and Dismissal Appeal, created quite a bit of conversation, discussion, as the College Credit Plus program was the first time that our committee had seen that. So we asked a lot of questions about College Credit Plus and how we might be able to enhance it. Those similar questions were then again brung up later on, and I believe Ms. Bolton mentioned that in the Student Achievement Committee. We talked about our wellness curriculum and advised the curriculum department to review the child sexual assault section and the wellness curriculum policy and provided update to the committee. Dr. Williams updated committee with what was in the health curriculum in regards to child sexual assault. The committee discussed and revised the policy and agreed with Dr. Williams' recommendation to revisions of the document. Finally, we talked about board policy in ensuring that we're naming schools after women in an effort for equity. We know that there's an upcoming school naming. We wanted to be, we wanted to ensure that going forward, we would make sure that we are being considerate of naming schools after women. Meeting was then adjourned about 1:00, in which I was then late for student achievement. What a day.
I have no other comments on the report.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any question about the report? Ms. Bowers and Ms. Bolton?
I want to reiterate, Board Member Davis expressed that there was lots of conversation about the new board policy, 2272, College Credit Plus, Probation and Dismissal. I want to emphasize, part of my conversation during that time was because this is such a unique, different opportunity for our students, we want to make sure that they have the best support around this, and it's so independent for students to be responsible, and there's not a lot of communication between our district and the college for which they are attending. I emphasize the importance of strengthening that communication prior to any moving to the dismissal, just to give our students a chance, because our students need a lot more support. So I wanted to reiterate the importance of that to be included in these minutes regarding that policy.
Okay. Thank you. So you're asking that it be revised?
Yes.
To accommodate your statement?
Yes.
And you can make sure that Ms. Davis incorporates that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I have a comment too about College Credit Plus. Here's another example of, we had something locally that was very, very positive and popular when we had a relationship, particularly with Cincinnati State. And then the state, in an effort to introduce more opportunity for children and students to have the college credit, they introduced College Credit Plus. And what has happened with College Credit Plus is it has become much too exclusive to my way of thinking, and indeed is not necessarily serving the very students that it needs to. I would like, when we get to this particular policy, I'd like to have some more discussion about it prior to voting on the policy, obviously. But again, College Credit Plus is a great benefit, but this is so punitive, and this is talking about certainly increased communication among the higher education folks and us, but it also is, it is also creating too much of a burden of acceptance. The colleges are basically telling us that they can refuse a great many of our children that need to be there. And I don't want to enter into that right now until we fully appreciate what that would be. The other point, appreciate the work on curriculum, and I wanted to know if it would be possible with those revisions that the good doctor has recommended for our science and health curriculum, if we vote on that today as policy, that could count as the full board adopting that revision for the curriculum, because the full board has to vote on curriculum. And it would seem like it can certainly come from policy, doesn't have to come from student achievement or anybody else, but if that's a revision, then that could count. But as long as the whole board is voting on that, I think that would be great to make that revision. But it is a board decision to adopt curriculum.
Okay. Is, I'm assuming that's the resolution that's being presented, to adopt the curriculum? Is that the resolution, or is it a revision?
No, I think it's just in the minutes for, as a suggested revision. And I'm wondering if in the minutes, as a suggested revision, that can count as a curricular vote for us. I think we're all in favor of that. But if we single that out particularly, then that would save us going back through the whole process.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you. Ms. Bolton, please present the November 21 Student Achievement Committee Meeting Report.
Yes. We had, again, another full meeting, and we talked a little bit about the work plan explanation and where we were based upon some of the suggestions for the last several months, that the previous several months that the administration had made regarding reducing some of the items. We had done some of that, and we know that that's a discussion today for ad hoc and others. We also, according to our work plan, did have presentations regarding identification of gifted, and we've supplied the board with the charts. We did talk too about the delay, what we perceived to be a delay of board work, which was the ABC five-year contract, and I know that's with the treasurer at this time. Also, some follow-up meetings, items from previous meetings. We hit particularly about some of the programs that were mentioned in the previous efforts. Particular note, I would say, again, there is a memorandum between CPS and New Jerusalem regarding the Carthage School and the grounds, and I still wish we could find that and locate that, and also review the agreement we had with MedPace too, that seems to be underserving Schroder. That came up. We have the Workforce Development Charter, which is coming back to the board for approval, which is great. We also had a wonderful presentation by Mr. Turner regarding this wonderful expansive career pathway regarding agriculture. And also, we continue the discussion about how we can make all of our high schools have appropriate offerings, both of the college credit plus, but also appropriate offerings regarding advanced placement. And this is something that we continue to work on, and I'm sure we'll be continuing to work, appreciate the administration's efforts in that. Also, coming before the board, maybe not today, but after we get the survey back from students, revision to the LSDMC work plan or workbook, guidebook, I guess, regarding the right of students to vote on the LSDMC. I guess that'll be coming back in January. We also, as you know, convened a safety committee, subcommittee, Mr. Morosky, and fortunately, Mr. Davis is going to continue to serve as a community member on that. Superintendent's evaluation was discussed, and then input for reforms. We talked about some of the stuff that's happening in Columbus. We also broached the subject regarding the Iowa testing and the results regarding Walnut Hills admittance, and then student conduct on Metro. And then finally, the effort was made to create somewhat of a report that is included for the board regarding the names of all of our schools and where that comes from, finding out that everything, everybody but one is local, which is interesting. And we did propose that it is difficult necessarily to change a name if it's already a person's name. So we did, for you, put a list of the schools that might be most easily changed, or less controversially changed, as well as suggesting any new schools as well. So I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Any questions about the report? Mr. Morosky?
I would just add, no questions. I would just add that, for the benefit of the public, that that safety committee convening will be January 29 at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We'll talk about it tomorrow at our Student Achievement Committee Meeting, but I figured since we have a nice-sized crowd today, and folks watching at home, and the press, January 29 at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we will be convening our pedestrian safety committee. And then also, and we can wait till January, but the LSDMC student member voting, the data did come back, the students overwhelmingly said they'd like to vote, so plan to recommend a revision in January, then to revise the revision, since I was a positive voting member, to make it so students can vote again in January.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Madam Chair, I would add to that, I think we heard from at least a couple of members of the STEP Committee when it was convened last week, that on the student voting piece, we probably need in the revision to address where there are multiple students that sit on LSDMC versus one student, and thinking in terms of quite possibly, if you, we have multiple, they might need to vote as a block. So that's just something else to be thinking about as we look at the revision.
Okay. So, just a comment, and not to belabor this comment over time, but as I read the minutes, I still have some confusion around the status of some of the suggested recommendations here. I don't want to belabor it, but because we already assigned the ad hoc to take a look at these things, but we, you know, I do want to support the recording of the minutes, and hopefully, you know, ad hoc can give us a report when it's their time about where some of the questions lie and some of the recommendations to be made. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bowers, please present, I'm sorry, Ms. Bates, please present the December 6, 2019 Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Report.
Yes, thank you. That's what everybody's here for, right?
Yeah, just shortly, you know, just temporarily.
Okay. Well, we did meet, and as President Jones said, we discussed some of the areas of concern that the board had with the way we've organized our work. And, I mean, you have a short version of this, but kind of the skinny of it all is that the ad hoc committee agreed that we would recommend to the board that we align our committees to the strategic plan. And we already have, if you see on page, it's on page two, it's one of the actions, save it a little bit, anyway, that we would add health and safety. We have finance already covered under, actually, it's the action, Students Center Decision Making is under Student Achievement Committee already, and will continue. Health and safety has been, is one of the four priorities of the strategic plan, and this committee believed that it warranted its own committee. So that's a recommendation, and you'll see the bullet points underneath of some of the areas that could be considered. Community engagement and influence would be assumed in all of the committees. Optimize capabilities would be policy committee, and growth would be finance committee. So the major areas, or the areas of the strategic plan, if agreed to by this board, would be aligned with this committee's structure. So the big change would be in 2020, adding health and safety, and so that individual board members aren't overburdened. The other recommendation is that the president will serve as a committee member of his or her choice on these committees instead of ex officio. So we would have more people on the ground working these committees. That's the major recommendation. We've also talked about, in the initial meeting of all of the committees, that each committee will develop, like maybe a one-pager mission. Right now, we're doing work plans. So a one-pager mission of what this committee is about, and bring it to the full board, and that, we did discuss also how to bring, oh, that assignments and agenda items that the committees will bring forward will also go to the full board, so that the board knows what the committees are working on while the committees are working, rather than reading the minutes after the fact. So it's just increased communication, alignment with the strategic plan, and a focus on areas that we have decided through our strategic plan that are important to this district and our students.
Yes. Questions? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I would just add, I think it was a great discussion with Ms. Bowers, Ms. Bates, and then our superintendent and our treasurer in that meeting. And I think the idea is, you know, to really now operationalize our board around what we've all agreed to is that strategic plan, and then allowing a very clear and consistent way for the community to engage in each of those pillars, to get updates or have discussions specific to the area that they're most passionate about, while demonstrating our 100% commitment to the execution of that plan, and doing whatever we can to support and remove barriers for our administration as they do the work each and every day. So I'm excited about the, that proposal, in that it allows us now to kind of get in formation after what has been a very exciting year of building that plan, and now we can all kind of organize around that.
Mr. Morosky?
I appreciate, thank you, President Jones. I appreciate the work you three put into this. I'm going to organize my comments by likes, questions, and dislikes, if that's okay. So likes, I do think we need another committee. I agree with that. I also think student achievement needs to figure out, like, what belongs there, for sure, what could probably be somewhere else. I don't know if I'm sold that health and safety is the other committee. I think about things like operations and HR and all that. I'm not saying I'm sold or unsold. I think, I love the emotional honesty bullying, safety of students, it's all super important. I just don't know if that is the bucket. I think about a lot of the other things in student achievement, and there's a lot of HR, and there's some operational things that I don't know can maybe be moved out, something to talk about as we go forward, particularly at our retreat in January, maybe. But I do like the idea of a fourth committee. I like the idea of the president being on a committee of his or her choosing. And I also like the emphasis on the better communication coming back to the board here, the action items. So kudos to all that stuff. I thought that was great. My only, and I don't even know if it's a question as much as it is a comment, and I'm sure you all talked about this in the meeting too, and I don't for a second think that any of you believe that growth is finance committee, period. That growth is finance committee, period, or Students Center Decision Making is student achievement, period, because they're all so multifaceted, like we talked about with all the action items at the now infamous Student Achievement Committee Meeting, that where we talked about, this all requires appropriation of funds, so obviously, finance has to be a part of it, or today, the policy on CCP that has to go to student achievement. So I don't, I don't believe that that was intended. And if it was, you can let me know. Okay. And the only, the only, like, I'll put a sort of pin in something that I wasn't a huge fan of, is limiting committee minutes to a certain amount of time. Personally, I think that sounds great, but doing the people's business doesn't have a hard stop. And so I don't, I don't, I reject that one recommendation. I know this is just a beginning list, but outside that, I think it's great. I'd like to have maybe more discussion on what that fourth committee would be, though.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, so, that one comment on the length of the meetings, and, you know, I think the idea around that was to make sure that, you know, there's an art and a science to running efficient meetings, and if we're wanting to engage our public, and let's say it's at a 4:00 timeframe, you know, maybe parents have to go pick up kids, or they've made arrangements. So it was more of saying, how can we make our meetings so efficient that people are like, well, I'll go give an hour to go to that meeting, versus, you know, sometimes they can go on and discussions, which is all great, but how can we ensure that, and maybe it's not like, it has to be in this time, but we employ, like, good meeting facilitation practices, so that our public, when they do give us our time, it is used most efficiently and allow them to do their other roles.
Ms. Bates, followed by Ms. Bolton?
Yes, a couple things. Health and safety. Health and safety has been, is being handled, as far as I know, in three separate areas right now. I mean, you're handling it in the student achievement, we have, like, a community slash board slash union slash Vision Zero Committee going on with some administration, and then there's the student safety committee that some of you are active on. So that clearly has a lot of work that really needs to be pulled together. I know we're communicating, but we may be duplicating some of our work, and that may be best held together in one committee. So that's kind of, end the alignment with the strategic plan. So that's kind of the thinking there. And the other point was, yes, okay, so you're right. What we wanted to make sure we did was that the areas of the strategic plan were captured somewhere, but not exclusively somewhere. So it may be, you know, what was your example? That growth may be housed in finance, because we have to figure out how to pay for these new buildings. But that, you know, the models and items that are more focused on student achievement would, of course, go to student achievement. But, you know, like preschool promise and some other areas, we wanted to make sure there was a house for them, so that they weren't overlooked, or we thought student achievement was taking care of it. Oh, no, it's, so, that was, that's the idea. So you were absolutely right, that it's not exclusive to these committees.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I appreciate the work. I know when we've been on ad hoc before, we didn't have quite as much, didn't have the privilege of having the superintendent and the treasurer sit in on the meeting for six months, the last time there was an ad hoc committee. So I think this is useful. I have several reservations about things that you can imagine I would. I think part of the reason that student achievement is what it is, is that everything that wasn't financed or policy got placed in student achievement. I think another issue is that we do not necessarily do enough community effort at our general board meetings themselves. So you have communities, community members presenting things that probably the whole board should hear, rather than using student achievement as. So I think we need to adjust our general board meetings as well. I have reservations about separating some things from student achievement, because I believe very strongly that there's three or four things that are in the bylaws that say we're supposed to do. One is curriculum and instruction, one is whole child, and one is, I think, HR or what have you. It would bother me to remove the whole child concept from student achievement, because I think we invented that seven years ago, where that is all part of the instruction, whether it's the Community Learning Center model, or whether it's the emphasis on the school-based health centers. So I'd like to try to keep that there, but there's certainly no reason to have HR there, and that can be moved without a problem. All this has to be done via writing new bylaws. I can't, we can't just do it, but we can rewrite. As a fourth, I would suggest, and I'll tag along with Mr. Morosky on this, if you look at our strategic plan, besides the fact of understating the importance of finances throughout the strategic plan, the other area that is particularly important and is fragmented in all of the committees is operations. And I think there's a philosophical belief that somehow we don't have that much to do about operations, but indeed, we have oversight of operations, whether it's HR, transportation, food, IT, facilities, lobbying, engagement, the safety piece. Those are functions, those are operations, that are not specific necessarily to curriculum and instruction, but are where so much of our money and our effort in the general framework is. So I'd probably offer an idea that maybe we rethink, and health and safety can be part of that. But I think that what would clear up some space for all committees would be to be looking at operations. But I know we have to rewrite the bylaws for this. I do think doing the strategic plan as part of everybody's work plan absolutely makes sense, and be happy to do that. But again, we will do our work plans in January. But we now have to redo the bylaws to make sure we know what kind of committees we're really talking about. But if we do health and safety, I would add operations to that.
Okay. So, did you need to respond?
Yeah, I was just, no, I agree, and I think that's a good addition. But I don't think, I think we can, and if we do approve this, we will be adding a fourth committee. And when the charter is developed, we can consider adding operations. But I don't think we have to change the, we could direct the board to change the bylaws based on a vote to add a committee, rather than the other way around.
I totally agree. And if that's the only thing we're going to vote on, I think that's reasonable.
This, that, my, and that's where I was going. This is the only recommendation that we're voting on, is the, is what's presented here, the fourth committee. Now, okay, having said that, and in need for us to move on, I think, for me, this is an extremely valuable conversation that's long overdue, and what it does for us is kind of force us, not force in a bad term, to really look at ourselves, and the accountability that we build just within the board structure. And I think, and if you recall, there was a list of suggestions that came out of our last board meeting, that ad hoc still has to go through the list and complete that. And a lot of what everybody's talking about is on that list, okay, of concerns. I think I like, you know, there's a word that I heard that I particularly like, and that's balance. And I'm speaking more, you know, and that's balance. And I'm, I'm speaking more, you know, balance not only in terms of our workload and what we are responsible for in governance, but also balance in terms of how we interact with our administration. So that is critical. And I caution us that whatever we do, we constantly have to think, is this our role? And if it's not, we have to be comfortable in holding administration accountable for those things. So anyway, I, I think this is a great start, and just so we're, we can move on. So the, when the minutes are approved, we are actually approving that particular recommendation made by board member Bates regarding adding the fourth committee. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Mr. Murawski?
Just quick clarification. And, and in so doing, that this fourth committee is health and safety, or just that there is a fourth committee?
With, but, if I may?
Yes.
With a focus on health and safety, but not exclusive of other areas that the board may want to include in that, such as operations. We may call it operations at some point. We don't have, but yeah.
Right. Okay, so, all right. Any other questions about the minutes, and we'll move on? Okay. Ms. Bowers, please present the December 10, 2019 Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee meeting.
Okay. Well, we met, basically, I believe that this meeting was to report out about our communication, how we've been reporting, informing the community about how we've been, we're moving forward on the strategic plan and what that is. There were a few, not, not most of the committee members of the STEP committee were there, but there were a lot of, of members there. And so basically, our chief strategy officer, Sarah Tremble Oliver, and our chief communications and engagement officer, Lauren Worley, did presentations to the group, explaining how we were, information was mailed out. We did find some barriers to that, because a lot of people were saying that they did not receive information on the strategic plan. So we were talking about how to get the information out in multiple venues. The committee also had an extensive conversation about the strategic plan being reported in council meetings, and how they were really open to being actively cheerleaders, so to speak, for us, in their council meetings and in their communities. And then we also talked about how to offset some negative comments that people may have regarding our report card, and how we focus on the strengths and the growths of our committee and pointing out key points, or the district, and reporting out key points where we're, where we are making progress. So the committee was, members were very open to getting information from us and how to report to the community how we're doing. So they were very open to being available to do that. One of the key things of the action was at the board, along with the superintendent, we kind of talked briefly about how to move on, what the next steps were around convening further steps of committee from that point on.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Davis?
I just have a point of clarification. I know that my good friend Craig Rosen attended this meeting, but I don't see his name.
Oh, he was there.
Okay. So, please, we note the revision. Thank you. My, my question is, so, is STEP, and I'm asking this for purpose of the organizational structure, is STEP an ongoing committee that should be noted on the organizational structure? Yes.
Well, I think this, this is one of those that I think we could maybe use as an example, because, you know, I was the chair, and I didn't even know that the agenda had been created, or I didn't, you know, typically, if we're operating in committee structure, the chair would then know that there's gonna be a meeting and then have a conversation with the committee members, hey, is there anything we want on the, the calendar, et cetera? So I think this was kind of maybe sent out as a STEP meeting that was maybe more of a, an update. So, you know, my, my, which is fine. But my opinion is, and we need to get those on the calendar, hopefully, going forward for our board members, as our meetings and our calendars are quite complex these days. But besides all that, I, what I think is good is it did kind of call out where we are today as far as completing the plan, the communication of the plan. And I have to say, kudos to those people sitting up here, or people in the administration, et cetera, who have done a great job of making sure people know about it, because it's been proactively brought up to me many times. But I think at this point, it's now to say, great, the plan is created, it's been communicated, and now we need to go implement. And I know at my, the day job, the, the goal for 2020 is, we also went through a big planning process, and the company said, we just gotta go do the work. And I think now, putting that into the committees allows it to kind of just now go into our day-to-day operations, because that's really what it was intended to do.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I too was surprised that we had a meeting, but I also want to thank the superintendent and administration for calling it. I think it was nice closure for our community members that did partake in developing the strategic plan. I think it, as a committee, as a board committee, it should be sunsetted. It should be, it has, it has done its work and done it well. I do think, though, that it makes perfect sense for the superintendent administration, and even the board on occasion, to reach out even via email to that community group, because I walked into the meeting, say, well, this has gotta be the last meeting, and then we had such great dialogue that I think was helpful, and outside our inner circle, that it was helpful. So I would hope that some sort of continued communication with those members continue. But we do not need to have it as a board committee. It could be a superintendent's committee, or just a, kind of a chat group.
Yes, and the reason that I asked the question is because it was noticed as a board meeting. So I understand the need to update, the importance of that. And so I agree with Board Member Messer, that if we can, if there's going to be ongoing updates, if we could get it on at least our calendars, that way it's open to any board member who wants to come, well, always is, but as a, as an update to the community. So that's supportive. We support that. Okay. Thank you. All righty. As a member of the Records Commission Committee, I'll present the December 10, 2019 Records Commission Report. This was a meeting that was held on December 10 at 3:20 in the Ed Center in the superintendent's office. This is a required meeting by statute, and what it, what the purpose of this meeting is, is to really review our district's internal process around records retention. And there is a period of time, I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but overall, and Mr. Hoing, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's an ongoing process that, where the district has to really look at whether or not we're meeting compliance around the records retention, how do we dispose of records, where that's needed, and where do we have gaps, if that's the case. Now, what we discovered is, we're actually doing pretty well. I mean, we've met the compliance rules around that, so there's no huge issues around that. The action that came out of that, however, is that Mr. Hoing will review the records retention schedule with the board office staff, administrative staff, and the Office of Public Affairs. He'll be working with Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty to schedule an annual review of the records retention schedule with Central Office Department heads. That way, it gives a very comprehensive evolution of review with our central office teams. Okay. So, I believe we made it through all of the committee reports. So I need a motion to approve the committee minutes with the suggested revisions.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, would you please introduce our first presentation?
Gladly. So, in thinking about Cincinnati Public Schools becoming and being a place of destination, it quite honestly made sense that we present to the board a presentation in terms of what's been happening as it relates to our immigrant families and some of the supports that are in place to help make sure that they have access to resources and are included. And so Julie LaMaster is here with us this morning. She is the Executive Director for Immigrant Refugee Law Center. So Julie, thank you. And she did provide a handout that I placed at your set.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you to the board and to Superintendent Mitchell for inviting me here today. Almost three years ago, I moved back to Cincinnati, my hometown, after living in Washington DC doing international women's rights work, mainly with women in conflict countries. I never thought I'd come back, but Cincinnati has a way of bringing us all home, and I'm certainly glad it did. In the summer of 2017, I sat down to catch up over coffee with an old friend, Darlene Kamine. I'm sure that most, if not all of you, know Darlene. She is a powerhouse in town and has been instrumental in creating CPS community learning centers and making them what they are today. I told her that I wanted to work with our immigrant and refugee population. I had started out my legal career many years ago, working in immigration, and through my international work on women, peace, and security, had advocated around a lot of refugee issues and policies. So this would allow me to bring that international work back home. Darlene then told me about the community learning centers, and said that one of the biggest barriers they were facing in schools with large immigrant and refugee populations, such as Robert's Academy, where the English language learner population went from zero to 60% in just 10 years, or more than 60%, and the Academy of World Languages, where half the population are refugees from around the world, was the need for legal services. She described parents asking the staff at Robert's if they would take their children in case of emergency. At an ask your lawyer night that was held at Robert's, families waited in line for hours just to have three minutes with an attorney. At AWL, a mother who had entered the US with refugee status had been unjustly deported and separated from her family because she had not honed, known how to follow the next steps in her case. US immigration law is incredibly complex, and policy is changing literally almost every day. And if you can't pay for legal help, your odds are grim. Without an attorney, only 17% achieve success. And only a lucky 2% of immigration applicants have help from pro-bone attorneys like ours. Refugees can easily lose their legal status if they don't understand the follow-through needed to become permanent residents and ultimately citizens. But with an attorney, you are more than three and a half more times more likely to succeed. So can you imagine these families here in our community, just trying to make a better future for their children, enrolling them in our schools, working hard, trying to learn English, not used to dealing with legal systems in their own countries, and having to navigate our incredibly complex immigration system? Or children living in uncertainty and fear, not knowing whether they're welcome in this country, whether they will be able to stay, or whether their parents will be there when they get home from school? The team at Robert's tells the story of how more than half the kids did not come to school the day after the last presidential election, and that is not an uncommon story. Our schools see the effects of immigration policy on families and children at the most basic level, in the schools and in the classrooms. Most families could not afford a private attorney, and at the time, there were few low-cost services available in town, and families were falling through the cracks. So when Darlene asked me if this something, if this was something I was interested in taking on, I jumped at the chance. The Immigrant and Refugee Law Center opened its doors in the Robert's Welcome Center in February of 2018. It was just myself and two law students from UC of College of Law, where I'm also adjunct faculty, working closely with the Robert's team. Immediately, we had a long list of clients, because families had been waiting a long time for our services. The trust was immediate, because the Robert's Welcome Center has built such a strong presence in and relationship with the community. And since then, we have enjoyed tremendous success. As you can imagine, the word has spread quickly among our families, where there's no lack of need. In addition, the outpouring of support from the broader community has been tremendous. So many people are looking for a way to help, and this gives them a local, hands-on opportunity to make a difference. In May, we opened our second office at the Academy of World Languages. And some of this information will be on the data sheets that you have. But since our opening, we have assisted several hundred families impacting more than 400 children from CPS schools, including Robert's, Dater, Rose Lawn, AWL, Withrow, Mount Airy, Leap Academy, Walnut Hills, my alma mater, Euler, Aiken, Carson Elementary, Hartwell, Cheviot, Hughes, and additional schools throughout the greater Cincinnati area. Our clients come to date from 47 diverse countries, and that list literally is growing every week. And people are really surprised to hear what a diverse city Cincinnati is. But Greater Cincinnati is home to refugees and immigrants from around the world. There are 4,330 identified ESL students in the CPS district alone. And of course, that number likely does not capture all of our refugee families. The Immigrant and Refugee Law Center provides free legal services to low-income families. We work with refugees, asylum seekers, unaccompanied minors who have come to this country on their own, and often end up in our schools, and victims of crime in our community who also have a special immigration pathway open to them. We assist people to obtain work authorization, green cards, and citizenship, and reunite families. To date, 25 of our clients have become citizens. Another 25 have become legal permanent residents or green card holders. We have obtained asylum, work authorization, special immigrant juvenile status, refugee travel documents, custody, and other status granted to more than 30 families, with many more applications pending. And these applications can take a very long time. So we help family during those long processes. We provide thorough consultation to enable families to understand and exercise their rights, and pursue humanitarian remedies under US immigration law. And we have really become the trusted source of legal information for our families. And we really try to provide that, whether ultimately we can take on representation or not. Our services have had a demonstrable effect on attendance, student stability, and parent engagement in the schools. That we know of, RLC is the only organization of its kind in the country, providing legal services directly in schools. In addition, our one-of-a-kind model allows us to work hand-in-hand with our community learning studying partners to provide the holistic services our families need. And if a partnership doesn't, is not there, we create it. So for instance, when we started, as I mentioned, my background is international women's rights, and I knew that we'd be working with a lot of women that had been through a lot of trauma. So I wanted to have support immediately available. I didn't want to have to say, well, there's a support group next Thursday down the hill that you can go to. So I worked with Tracy Power, the school resource coordinator at Robert's, to bring in women, helping women as a partner, so that when we are meeting with women who need help, we can directly defer, refer them to somebody who will come in there at Robert's. And all of our work is made possible because of the incredible team we have behind us, including an illustrious board of directors, now a staff of three, including myself, managing an attorney, and a program manager, who's also attorney, 35 volunteers, attorneys to date, 86 non-attorney volunteers working with us in various capacities, 49 student legal interns to date, and of course, our CLC partners. In addition, we now have support from the City of Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Bar Foundation, the Ohio State Bar Foundation, and many others. As you can imagine, as lawyers, this is really the highest vote of confidence. We will be kicking off our official volunteer attorney program in the first quarter of 2020. We will be providing in-depth training and mentorship to the many non-immigration attorneys in our community who are eager and waiting to be trained and take on cases and work with our families. This will greatly increase our capacity, as well substantive knowledge in the legal community. It's hard to believe that we've achieved all of this in just under two years. So I know time is short, so I'd like to just end with one of the many inspiring stories of our, of our families and our kids. This is a young woman who was one of the first cases that we took on. In fact, it was before we even opened our doors at Robert's. Mary Jo Montenegro, CPS social worker, called me about this young woman who was finding, having difficulty finding representation from her case. This amazing girl was from Honduras. Her mother had left her as an infant to come here to the US. We see that often with families, that mothers have to make that very hard choice to leave children behind, to escape, you know, very extreme situations, and come here and make a better lives, and help support, support their families at home. So this young woman grew up with her grandmother, and decided she wanted to see her mother. So she saved her own money. She made the long, arduous, and often dangerous trek from Honduras to the United States on her own. When she got here, she faced many obstacles, including family issues, but we were able to take on her case. We got a special immigrant juvenile status for her, and now she is waiting to be able to apply for her green card. I spoke with her last week. She, she was studying at Dater. She has since graduated. She told me that she now has a place on her own, living with a girlfriend. So obviously, she's doing really well. And, you know, we know that right now, that the college is not within the realm of financial possibilities for her, her family. But, you know, hope that we can support her as, as she moves forward. So just, you know, So it's just, you know, amazing to hear these stories and to also see the differences that our services are making. So to end, I just will say that IRLC was created to help fill a gap and provide the critical legal services that so many of our families need, and we are filling it. We will continue to grow and expand our capacity to meet the needs of families and our community in partnership with community learning centers and Cincinnati Public Schools. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. LaMaster. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer and Mr. Morosky?
Thank you so much. In coming up on my, end of my second year in this seat, this is probably one of the most meaningful presentations that I've heard. And yes, of course, you're helping all of these children, but what you're doing for their families is just incredible. And, you know, I think I sit with a whole board who would say that ensuring that these families are not just taken care of, but they're engaged and welcomed into our city is one of the most important things we can do for the future of Cincinnati. And I think, you know, city leadership has made us a sanctuary city, which is a great thing. But, you know, I think all of this together, hopefully, we could brand ourselves as the most welcoming city for people like those that you serve, seeking just a home. And thank you for all your work there. It is absolutely just, you know, meaningful, and what a perfect time of the year to talk about that, because I was over choking up. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And I will say that it's an incredible and unique way to work, because obviously, we're doing incredibly tense work as immigration lawyers, and then we walk out into the school and we see the kids, and it reminds us, you know, why we do all this. And then we see the families coming in for events and for classes. So it's just amazing to be able to work through the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bates.
Hey, Julie. As you know, I'm a huge fan of your work, and I just want to echo everything Ryan said, Vice President Messer. This is such a great thing to hear about at the end of the year, and I'm glad that there is media here. I don't know if they're reporting on this, but they should be. Not just should on the media, but this is important. And I want to highlight, you know, the health and safety. This piggybacks really well off the idea with the committee, the Health and Safety Committee, because that's what this is. And we know that students can't learn if they don't feel safe. And the work that you're doing, you don't need me to tell you this, but it's making our kids feel real safe. I was with some immigrant students on Monday, and I had them rank different settings, whether they felt safe. One was not safe, ten was very safe. I'll talk about some of the other stuff later, but I do want to highlight that these students, it was very high how they felt at school. They felt very safe at school, and a big part of that, of course, is because of the work y'all are doing. And I, again, I just want to highlight something else. Board member Messer said that this really is something that we should highlight and brag about and show up, because I don't know that this is happening other places either, to your point. And so just kudos to you, and thanks so much for everything y'all are doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bates, followed by Ms. Bolton.
This is incredibly important. My grandfather was an unaccompanied minor.
Oh, wow.
And things weren't as complicated back then, you know.
Things were.
He was sent here because, actually, his two brothers were killed in the war, and his mother didn't want to see another son gone, so his sister raised him in this country. So, you know, it's kind of like a pass forward. Let's support, you know, the children and the families that are coming over now, because they, you know, it's such an incredible, I mean, they need to come here. We need to welcome them. And again, as Mr. Messer says, I would like to be the city that is the most welcoming to these families in this country. So you're setting a great example with this organization, and, you know, you certainly have my support, and obviously, many others on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bowers.
Just very quickly, I was super impressed almost a couple of years ago when we were introduced, and it was described what you would be doing. There's no better example of somebody trying to create barrier-free education than what you're doing for our families. And more particularly, this is a classic example of equity, where families and children need particular services that we, in our primary responsibility, are not supposed to be providing. But if we want to provide them education, it has to be barrier-free, and it has to be equitable. And I applaud you, and I applaud the Community Learning Center Institute for letting this happen. And it's another testament to having great partnerships, but your leadership has been outstanding. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
I would just like to commend you. You and I met at Robert's many years ago. I want to believe Vera Brooks was the principal then?
Yeah.
I think that was before I...
Okay. But I've seen, I was present after the last presidential election, saw firsthand the effect with all of our students, our immigrant students, our refugee students, and response to that and interfere in helping to support them in that area. So I want to commend you, collaboration with the district, Clicky, Tracy, it's great, wonderful. Robert's being the hub of not just that neighborhood, but actually Cincinnati at large, being a hub for all of our refugee and immigrant families. So congratulations on this success and continuing on, and congratulations on your new office at AWL.
Yep, we hope to continue to expand.
Mr. Davis?
This is fascinating. I appreciate your work. It just has my brain, like, do we have something like this for the rest of the kids?
For arrested kids?
Yeah, for the rest of the kids. Like, this is awesome for the immigrant refugee population, but do you know, I mean, I might be talking to the superintendent, I might not even be talking to you, but do we have something like this for the rest of the kids? Because I know a lot of kids that have a lot of families that have a lot of legal problems that are barriers to their education. And I know we're up here championing and celebrating this, and this is awesome. But I, do we have something like this for the rest of our kids?
We don't, but it's something that we can definitely explore and look into.
I think this provides a good model for looking to that in the future.
This is an awesome model that we should be looking to expand
Absolutely.
to help other families. Because this is, you guys did a lot of work. I don't know how much money it takes to do this kind of stuff. But in two years, this is amazing. God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morosky?
I just want to say I appreciate Board Member Davis giving me that idea, because I know in like my, the social determinant world, while legal assistance isn't, because it's usually housing, transportation, et cetera, at TriHealth with BI3's help, they've got legal aid helping moms, because as we know, toxic stress causes preterm birth, et cetera, and bore everybody. But to your point, having moms and families and dads and kids having that other assistance because that toxic stress and trauma of the legal problems that some of our families are caught in perpetually because the system doesn't like them. So just so you know, even though you may not be here in January, you just gave me an idea. You'll be right over there. You'll be up here. He'll be up here reminding us.
Right next to Lauren. Save that seat for me.
Okay.
No, to Mike's point, the work that Children's has done around incorporating legal services with, at the Pediatric Center, is what got me thinking on top of this awesome work, because I don't want to minimize the need and necessity first for our immigrant and refugee population, because that's a whole nother level of barrier. So...
Sure, and we'd be happy to, you know, work together to give input on how this might look on a broader scale.
Yes. So in closing, I'm only going to ditto six times the sentiments of this board, and thank you so much for the work that you and your colleagues at the IRLC do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Superintendent, our next presentation.
Yes, so it is that time of the year. Every year, Jessica Shelley, our Director for Student Dining, comes before us to talk about the Good Food Purchasing Program. And so here she is for the close of this year.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, and Madam Chair and Board Members. Thank you for allowing me to come today and share the really fantastic news about the progress CPS is making with the Good Food Purchasing Program. A brief reminder, this is a way that we are moving towards a different kind of procurement of our food products we serve here at CPS, focusing on five main pillars: nutrition, environmental sustainability, valued workforce, local economies, and animal welfare. What this does essentially is trying to change the procurement pipeline, much like Lee did for buildings. They're trying to change that same kind of way of procurement in a better way for our entire system for food. So when we looked at this program, we're really excited to see how it aligns perfectly to the strategic plan. Not only is it focused on where our students are looking for in terms of how we are sourcing their food, it also speaks to their health and well-being, along with engaging many different community groups, and giving us the opportunity to really look at our procurement processes and how we can improve and continue to grow. This policy was adopted by the board in January of 2019, and our baseline year for our evaluation of this program was in 1617. This current school year is our third year actually working within the guidelines of Good Food Purchasing Program. We're one of only ten school districts in the nation right now that are operating under this program, and we're actually only one of five that's actively participating in the program. So our involvement is really important to hopefully drive the procurement pipeline forward, reduce the bottleneck, and encourage more school districts to join onboard with us. So a little clarification before I dive into the data. Our baseline year was in 1617. The report that we recently received in November of this year is based on last year. They analyzed our full data last year. But one of the things we asked them to do is actually give us the projections for where we are going to probably be for this current year, so that when we go out and do our bid process, we're operating under where we currently are, not where we were. So I'm going to give you kind of a little bit of background on both where we were, and that's a score that's official, and where we are right now, that is a score that's projected for us. So to give you a... Hey, to give you really a thirty thousand foot level overview of the five pillars, again, to remind you where we're at. Nutrition, they're looking at really where we are in procuring in terms of preparation, what kind of food we're procuring, where the environment is of how we're serving our food, and the health equity involved in that. There's baselines you have to meet in each category, and then there's points that you can receive in each category as well, depending on how well you are fulfilling that benchmark. And in nutrition, it shouldn't come as any supply prize, that we are actually at the maximum amount of points earned. We can't go any higher than where we're at, and we've met the baseline. But what I loved about this is that we are still able to move the needle in nutrition for our kids. We actually exceed the USDA guidelines in the food we currently serve, and we actually were able to increase the amount of whole and minimally processed foods by eleven percentage points. They like to see you increase by five percentage points each year, but we surpassed that and more than doubled that one for them. We really like to think that we're setting the standard for most schools across the country, certainly for school districts here in Ohio. So nutrition, we are doing excellent on. The next category is local economies. This is defined by how and where we purchase our food, so by distance, by ownership, and by overall size. And they award different points depending on who you purchase from. They want to really encourage keeping the federal dollars we get from USDA here locally in Ohio, and also supporting our smaller and family-owned farms. This is a category that we did not meet in baseline for 1819. But here's the exciting news I'm going to share a few, is that that's a big old hockey stick, and I love seeing that on a graph. And more importantly, they are projecting us to actually meet this baseline in 2019, 20, which is the school year we're currently operating in. I will tell you that our produce purchases have been one of our main drivers, and it's been a wonderful partnership we've had of our local farmers. Over thirty-five percent of the produce we serve in our schools is locally sourced from farmers within two hundred and fifty miles of Cincinnati. Eighty-five percent of the milk we're sourcing is Ohio dairy farmers that are small, family-owned farms. So we've really taken that initiative to focus on our local economies, because all the money that we do to operate our program is coming from Washington, DC. And it's my goal to take that money and invest it back here into Cincinnati and keep it in Ohio. Environmental sustainability has been more of a challenge for us to meet, mainly because the two ways that you meet this is by actually having USDA organic food products grass-fed, and these are products that are really outside of a school district's price range. I have about a dollar twenty-seven to spend on food products for CPS for my meal programs. It's incredibly challenging to find organic produce that fits into that price frame. So we're going to be probably focusing on seeing if we can reduce our carbon and water footprint, and we've already done a food waste audit at several schools and implemented a strategy, so we've met that qualification for the alternative option. And then our additional requirement is to have greater than twenty-five percent of our animal products without routine antibiotic use, and have no seafood that's on the seafood watch guard that's put out by a Monterey Bay Aquarium. We did not meet this baseline in 1819. We may meet it in 1920, depending on how well we reduce our carbon footprint. But I want to point out, one of the great things that we've done here is that we have actually doubled the amount of purchases that are being made that are raised without routine antibiotic use. So we have met that part of the baseline we have to achieve. We also have changed and trying to reduce our carbon footprint this year in all of our elementary schools. The only options that are made on Fridays for entrees are non-animal proteins. So you'll find many different types of options that are vegetarian versus having an animal protein involved. Again, not as a hockey stick, this is just a big old like upward trend. So I love this graph as well, and they are projecting us next year to have that raised without routine antibiotic use to actually be over twenty-five percent, and hopefully have that carbon reduction in there, since we are retooling our menus to reflect that plant-based diet, and we're really hoping that we can hit this baseline in 1920. Like I said, there's a lot of barriers in this one. When we dug down and drilled into the data, we found that if we want to go for grass-fed beef, we're looking at more than double the cost. Also, a lot of the grass-fed beef that we can get is actually not in the United States, and USDA governs us under something called Buy American. So some of that beef wouldn't even be able to be purchased through our school programs, even though it is grass-fed. Organic milk, there's very, very few people out there in Ohio that can provide us with over three hundred thousand milks a week of a delivery to all of our schools twice a week. When we looked through our current vendors, what organic milk would cost us, the price goes from fifteen cents a carton to a dollar twenty-nine a carton. So it's just not right this point financially able for us to put that investment in. What we do want to do, though, is take all those people who are now our local farmers, who are given those local economies, help them become organically certified. So then, we are not only purchasing local produce, we're purchasing organic produce. So we're working with a lot of our good community partners to hopefully make that happen. Valued workforce baseline is the other category we're working on. This has always been a strong value category for us. We have met baseline for a couple of years, and we continue to meet baseline this year as well. There are several key suppliers for us that meet the fair category for this. The ones in red there also are local categories, and the ones, some of the times, we have to compromise on this one, because, for example, clostram and baking is not a unionized plant. However, we choose to stay with them because they're local. So it's one of those balancing acts where I'm trading off maybe not having as high of valued workforce points, but I'm getting those local economy points, and also making sure I'm investing in companies who are employing CPS families and CPS graduates. So we did kind of dip down here a little bit in the number of fair trade, but that's because a lot of the companies that we left, who were fair trade, weren't local. So I left Sunkist, and Simplot, and Mann's, who are a lot of big produce companies, to purchase produce here locally. So it's a trade-off in figuring out how I'm going to balance these value categories out. Upstate Farms, it's a fabulous dairy in New York. I traded that off to invest back into Danone, which is actually here in Ohio. The fifth value category is animal welfare. This is the most challenging one. This is one that actually only one school district in the entire country has actually met, and it's incredibly difficult to do. One of the things they want us to do is reduce the amount of animal product by fifteen percent. That doesn't mean I offer an alternative that might be made of a plant-based diet, or a legume, or a pulse. It means that I've got to completely change my purchasing model and no longer purchase those animal products anymore. That's a hard sell to our students here. One of the big recipes they said was very accessible in other school districts is a chili made with beans and pulses instead of ground beef. And when we presented the option to our menu evaluation teams that are made up by students across our district of the Cincinnati chili made with ground lentils instead of ground beef, it wasn't well-received. So we're... So we're still working on how we can help our kids understand the value of both to animal welfare, environmental sustainability, and nutrition by giving them alternatives that are plant-based and fueled. We want to be careful, though, with some of the items we use, because there are certain pulses, like lentils, that are legumes that have a reaction for peanuts. So we've got to be careful when we replace. We don't want to hide that legume in there, because if we just call it a vegetarian nacho or a vegetarian taco and don't disclose it's a lentil, I may have a child with a peanut allergy who may not be aware, could consume it and have an anaphylactic shock. So we want to tread very carefully here on this particular value category, but we're working, we're working hard. My clicker does not like me. Yay! So yay! So here's the really good news, and I want to tell you that it may not seem like a lot, but guys, three points is huge. The center was like literally doing backflips to give us this report. They were like, we don't usually see this much progress from a school district from, you know, this early on, but we have moved from our baseline year to what we were last year in our school district by three points and gained entire baseline. But here is the really exciting stuff, is that they are actually projecting us to be at currently operating in this year at 17 points. We have almost doubled our baseline in only three years of this program by doing so much great work with our community partners, our vendors, our distributors, and our local farmers. And my team has worked diligently to make sure that this is something that we have on our focus and that we are focusing completely on for the future as well, because we see how close that four-star is, and we're shooting for that four-star rating. It's so close that we have it, and we have a big banner in our office that that four-star is on the horizon for us. So we're excited to keep on moving forward with the Good Food Purchasing Program. There are obstacles to overcome. We couldn't do it without our partnerships and community involvement. There's been a lot of planning behind the scenes, and it's been wonderful to work with our community partners. That's been a great part of our success, and we're really making sure we're balancing this out. We don't want to swing the pendulum too far and get away from our main goal of fueling our lifelong learners with food they'll eat, with food that's good for the environment, with food that's good for our community, and food that's good fiscally and responsible for here in Ohio. We do have some action planning priorities that we want to make sure we're working with in this coming year, making sure that we really have people who understand that we're doing this program. There's not a lot of awareness out there, and we really want to work with our community partners to get the word out of all the good things we're doing here at CPS. We want to keep on with those partnerships, get those farmers certified as organic, GAP certified, so they can keep on coming into our schools, and we can serve even more local produce and local product. We really need to onboard other large institutions. I'm out there by myself, and the bottleneck is there. If we keep on getting larger institutions involved, that pipeline grows bigger, and I'm able to do even more. So I really want to reach out to the different universities, hospitals, corporations, and school districts in our area to see if they will also get onboard for Good Food Purchasing Program. We also need to make sure that we keep this program fiscally sustainable. One of the things that does come with some of these initiatives is a higher increased cost. This year, we are recognizing a 38% increase in our food cost, and right now, we are losing money every time I serve a lunch meal. Not by much, but we are losing money. Where we are actually making money right now is in our breakfast program. So the best way for us to make this program sustainable is to increase the number of breakfasts we serve. That breakfast additional revenue can be invested right back into our program and help us promote and push forward the Good Food Purchasing Program. So at this point...
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, thank you, and I will take your questions.
Yes, we're going to start from the far left. Mr. Morosky, Ms. Bowers, Mr. Messer.
Start of the far left. Thank you, Jessica. You are awesome. You have always been awesome and a leader nationally with this, and when I go to Council Great City Schools events, people will talk about our food service. They may not know your name, I let them know your name. This is really, really impressive, and I just feel the need to highlight that. And it's been awesome watching this come to fruition, and I just, I want to make sure that you know how awesome I think this is. It's a really big deal to have 17 points and three stars. I also, before you got to the part of your presentation, you already had it on there, and I had written down about, you know, what about these larger institutions? What about children's? What about UC Health and the purchasing power, the bulk purchasing power that comes with that? I know out in the community, and for the edification of my colleagues, I'd like them to know, you know, out in the community, a lot of the organized labor folks and people who are in that picture there at the end, folks are coming to them saying, how can we do this? And I was like, well, volunteer Jessica's busy enough, but she doesn't need to lead all this, but you are, and it's really cool. And I just want my colleagues to know that people talk about you a lot out in the community and your leadership in this. I don't have any super-specific questions really, except maybe something for us to think about, maybe, is how all of the Board Member Bolton in our Student Achievement Committee packet, there is a significant update on our ag tech program.
I was going to say that.
I got more things. I might take more, I don't know. Actually, I just, I look at Board Member Bowers' notes to get good ideas, and I'm like...
That's in my notes.
I hope, I hope she calls on me first. Anyway, I don't even know what that means necessarily. Obviously, though, two people had that idea. There's got to be some sort of tie-in, and particularly when you got to the piece about helping the local farmers with the USDA piece. I don't know what any of this means, I just kind of throw it out there and let it germinate. It seems like there should be some ability to tie in the students' work with your work, leading in this way could be, and you're already roping the kids in in a lot of ways anyway, so it's something to think about in 2020 for us and you together. Also, as always, as I hope you know, offer my support and assistance, however that may be, and it may just be to get out of the way, which is fine, too, but this is such an important program. And lastly, to also just remind our colleagues that that picture from the May Day event was taken shortly after this board, with Jessica's leadership and assistance was given an award as Partner of the Year for our work with the Good Food Purchasing Program, which is significant in and of itself. And last, last, I promised President Jones, you know when I say "lastly," I mean I got two or three more things. I can't help but just comment on, I hope folks notice the complexities in our varied systems to doing the right thing, and the balancing act that a leader like Jessica Shelley and others in our district have to make when you're trying to do good here by taking it on the chin over here, and again, just how this larger system in which we all operate is not set up to do the right thing. And so any incremental moves we can make as a body with our administration and y'all is a big deal. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bowers.
Well, doggone it, Leslie, Mike took some of my stuff, but I'm still going to reiterate the importance of, as we're progressing in the ag ed and environmental area. I was wondering if there was any possibility of any thought regarding having intercessions with our students around, with partnering, because some of our students, like at the Montessori School, I think Hughes has intercessions, Clark has intercession, Gamble I know has intercessions, but if there's a possibility to partner, to educate our students on not just the, you know, the farming and all of that part, importance of local is important, too, of knowing about the business side also. I would just think that would be something to think about in the future as a partnership to our students who are in need of intercession, or maybe some educational presentations during their intercessions, that are specifically those schools or parts of schools that are focused on ag ed and environmental focus.
That's a wonderful suggestion. I'll take that to green umbrella. Thank you.
Mr. Messer.
Yes, I have a four-and-a-half-year-old who is very particular in what he eats, and he loves your food. So I think it's amazing that he can, he loves his food at school, doesn't want to take his lunch or whatever, and we're doing this as well, so it's great that the end product actually allows my son to get over his pickiness. The rest of them, pretty good, but he specifically is my litmus test, and he loves his food at school. There is an intersection...
He's made my day, thank you.
There's an intersection that I said on the Botanical and Horticulture Committee at the zoo, and it's funny that they just, at our last committee meeting on Tuesday, was sustainability related to organic food in the region, water conservation, and carbon footprint. So I'm wondering if there's something that could be done there, because those are also the priorities for the zoo and kind of the things that they've handed to the committee that might be interesting to leverage kind of their expertise as they're working through that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, very quickly, I think it would be great for you, and perhaps you've already done it, to meet with Mike Turner regarding the career path, kind of interfacing, particularly with those kids at Gamble and the FAA kids, and I think it'd be very useful. I appreciate you doing this, and you always have been one of the very first people that I think personifies pursuit of excellence and trying to do the best that we can do, not just get by or just be better, but to pursue excellence. I appreciate, but you're also not a zealot, so I appreciate you watching the dollars of this, because we can, we can go far, but if it's going to, if it costs beyond what should be costed, I really appreciate it. And I also like whoever did the rebranding of your title, Director of Student Dining. That beats the heck out of Director of Food Service. I love it, and it's very becoming on you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so in closing, thank you again, Ms. Shelley, and I am going to reiterate what I said to you on the phone when you and I chatted about that particular question I had. My three-year-old granddaughter, who is a preschooler in the district, is extremely picky, and her parents have a hard time trying to figure out what to feed her. She loves the school lunches, and she can repeat every day what she had for lunch. And her teacher even reported to her mom that she dances while she eats, so she's like enjoying it. So that's pretty good. You've made an impression. Thank you.
That's fabulous to hear. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much. All right. Great. Okay, so our final presentation is the strategic plan on growth, and I just want to say before we do this, I know our audience has been very patient. This is our last meeting, so of course, our agenda was packed. I appreciate your patience in waiting while we go through our last meeting of agenda items. So Superintendent.
Yes, so this morning, I have the honor to talk about our strategic plan in terms of our growth strategy. So more families are choosing Cincinnati Public Schools as their first choice, making our district truly a place of destination. So let me tell you why this is important to me. So this is my 27th year in education, and, thank you, and I am as excited today to talk about this work as I was when I was a baby first-year teacher. And I'm excited because when I began my career as a teacher, my mission was to make a positive difference for young people, to put them on a road to success. And because I care so deeply about the success of our people in this specific community, Cincinnati, I am committed to helping to make Cincinnati Public Schools a better place for everyone. So today, you're going to hear me talk about buildings and maps, and you're going to hear me talk about money and boundary lines. But this is really a presentation and a conversation about people. It's about our students. It's about us making student-centered decisions. It's about the health and safety of them. It's about empowered communities, and it's also about optimized capabilities for now and for the future, allowing our growth for many generations to come. Am I controlling this? Sorry. There we go. Okay. So this morning, I'm going to guide you through some options to explore, and these aren't all the options, but this is what our team has really talked through and vetted for, quite honestly, months. These are options for today, and they're options for tomorrow. And so we're going to look very specifically at optimized capabilities, and you see the areas in which we're going to look at under there, and then we're also going to specifically look at growth. And so it would be remiss of us to not provide a whole package and a whole picture of the work as opposed to just focusing on growth, because there are so many aspects of this work that fit together. In order for Cincinnati Public Schools to be common, to continue to be a place of destination, it means that there will be some changes. And in the words of my trainer, what doesn't challenge you won't change you. So there are some challenging things that we'll need to discuss. So here's a team that got together to have a conversation about the work, and although you see this as a design team, we pulled information together from conversations that we've had with the board, from conversations that we had with community, with forums. We've pulled all this information together, as well as the work that happened last year as we were developing the strategic plan. The options that we're going to present to you are grounded in equity, and that's a very, very specific thing for us to point out, because the board has a very strong resolution and policy around equity, and specifically called out disparities in the strategic plan, and so you will see that within our presentation. So we're going to start off with optimized capabilities, investing in our schools and our neighborhoods for the current and also for the future. All right. So when we think about optimized capabilities, we're first going to talk about capacity. And so there are some schools that have some capacity challenges that we're going to talk about, and those schools are Wanted Hills, Pleasant Ridge, Dater High School, as well as West High, Hyde Park, and Carthage. And capacity doesn't necessarily mean that they're overcapacity, it also could mean that they're undercapacity, and so there are opportunities for us to explore. So capacity. So Wanted Hills is a school that comes to our mind when we think about the capacity of that school and the number of students who attend that school. So Wanted Hills has over 3,000 students, is a very highly sought-after school, and a school that we're very proud of within our district. There are approximately 30 teachers or more who actually are on a cart, so they do not have a classroom, and so they travel from classroom to classroom on a cart teaching young people. In order to be able to provide those teachers with a space for them to be able to teach, optimizing their capabilities, it requires an expansion to that school, and it will cost approximately $6.7 million. So that will get the school up to taking care of the children and the teachers who are currently there. If we want to add on additional classrooms, so an additional 10 classrooms to be able to allow the school to grow, then that would be an additional $4 million. I'm pointing everywhere. All right. Our next school that we're going to talk about in terms of capacity is Pleasant Ridge School. And so again, this plan, these options are for today, but many of these options are also for tomorrow. So you'll see that for the Pleasant Ridge option, we're talking about incoming students. So we don't want parents and the community to be afraid and fear that their kids are going to be displaced. So that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about incoming students. So we know that Pleasant Ridge has a lot of students in their school and could use some additional room and space. And so option one is for Woodford to remain a magnet school, and that the current streets that are in Kennedy Heights that are currently assigned to Pleasant Ridge would be reassigned to John P. Parker. Option two is that the Pleasant Ridge boundaries could be assigned that are Kennedy Heights... Option 2 is that the Pleasant Ridge boundaries could be assigned, that Kennedy Heights could be assigned to Woodford, making Woodford a neighborhood school. So the two options, quite honestly, in a summary, is to be able to shift some of the boundary lines for Pleasant Ridge, removing some of the students who are there to either John P. Parker or either Woodford. And then there's a map that actually shows you those three scenarios. You have that in your packet of your presentation, but obviously I can provide for you a larger one. The first map to the left, to your far left, is the current boundary lines for Pleasant Ridge, and then the second one shows Woodford staying a magnet school, and some of the streets going to John P. Parker, and then the third map shows some streets going to Woodford, which would be Kennedy Heights. All right. Our next school that we looked at, and it'd really be very transparent, also really keeping in mind what the board has talked with us about. I remember last year when we started the conversation about Mercy, and the board said, "Don't bring to us a solution for one school, but address the entire West Side." And so this school, these two schools were not necessarily on everyone's radar, but in the name of equity, we looked at these schools as well. So we looked at Dater High School as well as West High High School. And so here's the reason we looked at these two schools. West High has a larger footprint in terms of square footage with fewer students than Dater. In addition, when we look at the career tech offerings, comparing the West Side to the East Side, the East Side has a lot more career tech offerings for higher-level and higher-paying jobs. And so when we look at this in its totality, we looked at the possibility of doing some reshaping of Dater and West High in the name of equity and in the interest of our students. So one option could be that Dater become a 7th and 8th grade building, or 7'9", remembering the size of that school, and that West High would become 9'12" or 10'12". Here's another reason that we talked about this, is that in some respects, Dater has its own identity, but in other respects, it doesn't. It doesn't have its own sports team. They have to actually combine with West High. And so we thought about how could we create an entire campus using all of the available space there while increasing and enhancing the college preparatory program, and then expanding career pathways for that entire campus in a significant way. Or we could maintain two separate high schools, which is Option 2, and right-size Dater through the lottery process. So reduce the number of students who go to Dater, because the footprint of the square footage, quite honestly, is not the best situation for those young people. Regardless of whether we go with Option 1 or Option 2, our intent is to enhance the college preparatory program and expand career tech offerings. We believe that that is the right thing to do. And that addresses student-centered decision-making as well as optimized capabilities. Hyde Park School. So for a while, we've had many parents and community members come and talk with the board at student achievement, as well as the board meetings regarding Hyde Park School. So we currently, currently Hyde Park School has approximately 534 students. We are leasing space across the street at a bank in which we have three classrooms. In order to move forward with the renovation that has been proposed by the Hyde Park community, it would require renovation of $6.9 million, which would add a capacity of the school to 600 students. It would allow for 600 students total, as opposed to the 534 that is currently serving. That's Option 1. Option 2 is to eliminate the incoming sibling enrollment for the 147 students who currently live outside of that attendance boundary. So there are 147 students who do not live within the Hyde Park Oakley boundary. Again, this is a plan for today and for tomorrow. It would not be displacing those 147 students today, but it would say, moving forward, students who live in those attendance areas where they live would not have access to Hyde Park School, which would require some change to the sibling enrollment policy that the board has. It's also important to note that there are 48 students who are in the magnet program at Hyde Park, and this is their last year. They are 6th graders, so they will be transitioning out. The reason that we even broached the topic of the sibling enrollment concern is that if the 147 students who are currently living outside the boundary line, once they matriculate out, and that's probably really not the right term, matriculate, but once they leave 6th grade, you will still have a capacity issue if you continue to allow their siblings to come through. So we will never fix that situation. If we remove the 147 students moving forward, and this is a multi-year plan, then quite honestly, the building is large enough to accommodate the students who are currently there. Actually, the enrollment would drop pretty dramatically by almost 150 kids. So with Option 2, there could be no renovation, because the building is large enough, if we remove the 147 students moving forward, or we could remove the 147 students moving forward, their siblings, and expand the gym. So those are two separate options for Hyde Park School. And then here's a map in your packet that shows you Hyde Park School, and the little pink dots or little circles that shows you where the kids actually live who attend that Okay, on to Carthage. Now, Carthage is actually a school that is under-enrolled, so there are some capacity opportunities there. And so we looked at Carthage, and we also looked at Hartwell, and Hartwell has quite a few students, and it is a pre-K through 8th grade building. And one option that we explored is that we could expand Carthage, making it a pre-K through 1st grade school, and it's approximately a mile from Carthage, I mean from Hartwell, and then make Hartwell a 2 through 8th grade school, which would expand offerings at the Carthage Building, but it also would reduce the number of kids who are currently in Hartwell. So Hartwell has approximately 629 students. All right. So still talking about and thinking about optimized capabilities, we're now gonna switch to alignment. So when we look at alignment, there are some opportunities for us to make some changes. And so we're going to very specifically look at four areas in terms of schools, Winton Hills, Pleasant Hill, Mount Aerie, and Chase. So currently, there are quite a few students who live in the Winton Hills area, some of which live across the street from the school, who take a bus to Pleasant Hill. Do we know the approximate distance between Pleasant Hill and Winton Hills? And she's gonna access that for me. And so in terms of aligning neighborhoods, there's the opportunity for us to fill Winton Hills to its capacity and leave some streets still assigned to Pleasant Hill. And the reason that that's an option is because all of the students who live in the Winton Hills area will not fit in that building. Okay, so that's Option 1. So we would take some of the students who are currently at Pleasant Hill, and they would go to Winton Hills, but leave some students, some streets at Pleasant Hill, because the building cannot take the capacity at Winton Hills. Option 2 would be to assign all of the Winton Hill students to the Winton Hills area, creating a new school in Winton Hills. So Winton Hills, the existing building, could become a pre-K through 3rd grade school, and Jacobs, which is very close in proximity, could become a 4'6" school. You will see three different amounts in order to do some renovations, demolition, and additions to Jacobs, and those are in the amount of $25 million, $33 million, or $34 million, depending on the option, and that's something that we can definitely show you and explore. We looked at the blueprints of the plan with Robin, and she was able to break down each of those scenarios and the costs. That align, that alignment that I just discussed would align Mount Aerie students to Mount Aerie, because there's a trickle effect. Pleasant Hill to the neighborhood of College Hill in whole or part, and then aligning Chase to North Side. So you have students who live in Winton Hills who are attending Pleasant Hill. You have students who live in Mount Aerie, who live in, who are attending Mount Aerie but who live in North Side, College Hill. So it's trying to align all of those attendance boundaries. And there's a map. Click for me, please. Thank you. So this map, this document shows you the current to the far left, and then it shows you Option 1 and Option 2, as illustrated on the previous slides. And again, we will provide this map to you in an expanded version. All right. Equity. So we're gonna switch gears now, and we're gonna talk about equity. And quite honestly, we've, we've thought about and talked about equity all throughout this process. When we think about what we have on the east side of town, we know that we have Spencer, which is on the east side of town, and Spencer is for our exceptionally smart students and our gifted students. On the west side of town, we have Cheviot, which has a gifted program but doesn't have the exceptional component. So we are transporting students who live on the west side of town for the exceptional component over to Spencer. And so we believe that one option is that Spencer be completely for those students who live east of 75, and we would add an exceptional programming component to Cheviot, and those students who live west of 75, who are gifted or exceptional, would go to Cheviot. So now let's look at high schools, and I mentioned some of the disparities or inequities as it relates to career tech. So we looked at an east and west side designation for our high schools, and we also looked at some of our high schools being an all-city school. And so here's a map that shows you, thank you, the dividing line in terms of which schools would be considered on the west side, and then which schools would be considered on the east, and then you see in the top corner which schools would be identified as citywide schools. So the reason we really looked at this is, quite honestly, for a number of reasons. We looked at the disparities as it relates to the offerings on the east side and the west side. We looked at career tech offerings and the progression of how robust they are on the east side and the west side. We also looked at the travel time that many of our young people are spending going from one side of town to the other side of town with bus transportation. And we coupled that with a, an assumption around attendance. So we know that, quite honestly, attendance is an issue at many of our high schools, and if you are not on the dedicated route, then you have to make an extra special effort to get to your school, especially if it's way across town. And so we considered that this may be a strategy also to improve our attendance. And we also looked at athletics in terms of not having so many kids transfer to different schools across east and west for athletic programs. And we did also consider transportation costs. But you can see, we looked at the well-being and the health and the attendance of our young people before we even considered costs. So speaking of transportation, we, we looked at, as I mentioned, east side and west side schools, and in that conversation, we also looked at our late starts. And again, this is regarding the health and well-being of our young people, as well as optimized capabilities, as well as centered, centered, student-centered decision-making. So we currently, this identifies the high schools that have a start time of 8:00 or later currently. And so our proposal is to bring the remaining high schools to a 8:00 or later start time for next school year, so that by the end of next school year, or the beginning of the school year, quite honestly, all of our high schools would have a start time at 8:00 or later. And that's under optimized capability, health, and safety. Now, in order to do that, the next document is, it shows you the new start times for high schools. In order to make this work efficiently, we would propose going to a double-tiered system. And in order to go to a double-tiered system, it means that some schools who are already a late start, their time might be changing. And so this document, it shows you the current bell time, the proposed bell time, in terms of when school would start, and it shows the exact same thing for when school would end. So you will see in some instances, there is a change of time between 15, 10, to 45 minutes change. In any given moment, we have two options, to step forward into growth or to step back into safety. So the board has been very forward-thinking about growth, and so as a result of the board's forward-thinking, we have schools who will be expanding their offerings next year and growing. So Cairns will grow next year, you know, we opened that school this year, it will grow a grade next year. LEAP will grow to 6th grade next year, and because of the interest in that school, we're going to also add an additional 4th grade. Spencer is scheduled to grow to 11th grade next year. We want to be able to grow Cheviot to have a, an exceptional program there. Gamble Montessori, which we opened this year, will be adding two 9- to 12 classrooms, and we anticipate growing our preschool offerings across the district as well as Carthage. So potential new schools, and everyone knows that we're in conversation with Lighthouse regarding that school becoming a Cincinnati Public School, but we also explored the opportunity at potentially Jacobs, as well as the Heinoth property. So you may know or recall that Heinoth property, which is actually very close to LEAP, it's in between LEAP and Roale Hill School on Baltimore. At one point in time, there was a building at that location. We used it for swimming space after Heinoth closed down, and then after we finished with the facilities master plan, we tore the, the building down. And I believe there are 34 acres at the Heinoth property. Robin, where is she? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we looked at the landscape in terms of what do we currently have within our complement that we might be able to access, as well as Lighthouse, which is not yet a part of our So I got a little ahead of myself. Here's the breakdown of what's happening for next school year in terms of Cairns, LEAP, Spencer, Gamble Elementary, and then preschool. Now, the next school I'm gonna talk to you about is Spencer. And the reason I'm gonna bring up Spencer is because Spencer has been brought to the administrative, administration's attention, as well as the Student Achievement Committee regarding some of the desires that Spencer has in terms of their growth. Spencer would like to add an addition to their building, and the cost of that addition would be $11.2 million, which would add 172, space for 172 more students at that school. Its current enrollment with grades 3 through 10 is 342 students. The capacity of the building is 550. So the number of students who are currently attending that school fit So the number of students who are currently attending that school fit very well within that building. However, we do accept and acknowledge the fact that there are some enhancements that we need to do for high school. And so also, I want to bring to, to everyone's attention, when we first came up with the idea for Spencer, it was not intended ever to be a traditional high school. It was intended to be for, first of all, it was done in, in the name of equity. We looked at the number of students of color who did not have access to gifted services and access for kids who were very smart but didn't meet the gifted guidelines. And so that was the origination of that school. It was really built in equity, in terms of those kids. But it was also built around a very customized school in terms of not being your traditional school, where there are flexible schedules in terms of students, that there's a lot of project-based learning, that there's design thinking. And so that was the origin and the premise of that school. We never, ever promised anyone that it would be a huge school. It was intended to be a small school. So one option is for Spencer to grow to grades three through 12, and we do some enhancements as, as it is related to the science labs that are needed at the high school level. Option two is that grades three through 10 have a focus on design thinking, and we would still do the enhancements to a science lab, but that grades 11 through 12 could become an early college school, and the 11th and 12th graders could be on a college campus earning college credit. Option three is that the school is a three-through-12th-grade school, that we expand the gym and expand the lunchroom at a cost of 11.2 million dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention since Spencer has come to the administration and also to student achievement. In terms of continuing to think about equity, we believe it's in the district's best interest for our kids and our communities to have a new west-side high school. And so one option is to consider the Heinoth property and building on that site, and the approximate cost of a new high school would be approximately 33 million dollars. We could do some reimagining on the, the west side of town in terms of existing buildings that are there, and so that is something we could explore as well. We also explored the idea of a new career tech training center that could be at Jacobs. So Jacobs could have grades four through six from Wynton Hills, which would not fill that building, and then also have a career training center onsite as well. And the career center would be, that is included in the 25, 33, or 34 million dollar costs. So just to give you a summary of the cost as it relates to facilities only, you can see the figures. So I will end with, "Change is hard at first, messy in the middle, and gorgeous at the end."
We'll start, we'll open it up for questions and comments from the board, Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bowers. Sarah. We do want to leave before five o'clock PM. Okay? So, Mr. Messer.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. And, you know, I think we maybe take for granted sometimes how fortunate we are to be able to have conversations on growth, especially having attended the OSBA meeting and meeting people from around the state who maybe are having different conversations.
I'm going to ask Sarah to come forward. She's like my right hand in all of this work when we think about facilities and enrollment and projections, so my apologies.
So, I mean, I think probably it's good to maybe articulate our concerns because going in, into detail all these, we really would be here until about five o'clock. But maybe we capture these and maybe there's a follow-up, maybe at the board retreat or something, because some of these, I think, are probably going to be some pretty healthy conversations. Then, of course, I can't imagine, I mean, there's going to be a lot of hours of community engagement to then kind of pressure test and to get input and all that beyond just this group. But, you know, one thing that, when I started the Future Leaders Group down in OTR, there was an aha for me that I didn't know, and then now as a parent is also something that I think about a lot, and that is, in a lot of schools that I'm familiar with, other family members, and my stepson, for example, when you're in seventh grade, you're not in high school. And when I had this program, I had these kids that were truly kids, and I saw a huge difference the year that they spent their first year in high school. And I was like, oh, my gosh. And they were, it was totally different things that they were exposed to, et cetera. So one question I have is a philosophical question at, you know, I don't know anything about how that happened and when that happened, but I think it would be interesting because if there's an opportunity to rethink how we look at those junior high students, maybe it creates capacity where you may not have to expand Walnut, but maybe, Ms. Bolton, I know you and I have talked about that one particular school on Victory, that it's not that far away, but maybe that becomes a middle school, and then Walnut is truly a high school, and, and we pilot that. Yeah. And then, you know, and then looking at all of our high schools across the board, is it, is it best in today's world for a seventh grader to be with 12th graders? I don't know. I'm very nervous, you know, as a parent, and the, the exposures that come with that. So the second piece, you know, I just noted here was, my biggest takeaway here is, yes, we have expanding enrollment because of the great work that's being led here by this group of individuals, and we have increasing pressures from the state where we're not getting extra dollars from increased enrollment, which some people have missed that, but some of our state funds are being frozen, so there's not incremental revenue there. These are real financial major constraints that we're under, and we're in growth mode. And I think it just, it goes without saying, but to the audience and the people listening on the phones, et cetera, this is why we're so passionate about making sure we get all of the negotiations right with the city. And these, this is part and parcel. So it almost is like, this is the other piece of the equation. It's not just our business today, but we've got a lot ahead of us. As Superintendent, you know, I have been very passionate about the career tech, that nationally, 40% of our kids will go to college, 60% won't. So I love that kind of rethinking that, and, and making sure that we're not just, you know, the, whatever the percentage, we want to have X percent of our students have a choice that meets their desires and their skills, et cetera, and whatever that number is. And we are thinking like, we, so if 60% are going to college, we want to have a goal that at least, for 30% of our students, there's a career tech option or whatever. And that may inform then kind of what we do there. But as we've talked about, in like one-on-one a little bit, was the fact that in every jobs report for the region, healthcare is hands-down the number-one biggest job opportunity. It's everything from records management to techs and nursing, and the list goes on. So everything in there. And so we had talked about kind of taking the school for the creative and performing arts model, where people are really focused and intense learning there, and doing that on the life sciences side. So a school for the life sciences that would directly, it would be a career tech school, basically, for all the hospitals. Now, what I think is interesting about that is, all of our hospitals all report they're having difficulty recruiting. And some of them, I've had very direct conversations in the past few weeks, where their diversity numbers are horrible. And I think if the public knew some of that, we would be very disappointed. So they, they are already calling that as a priority for them. My guess is that might be a school that we could get paid for and sponsored, and maybe even housed, where they could do experiential learning on the campuses at Pill Hill, where all those thousands and thousands of jobs sitting open are. So I think that, that would be one. And then last but not least, you know, as we were looking at kind of that Pleasant Ridge, et cetera, I know some of us have been reached out to parents from around the district, and I think there's a growing number of a, kind of a rebirth in Amberly Village, kind of up in our top corner. And I, I think that that community needs to be engaged very deliberately in that. I, I feel like we're losing, because of capacity, and in this rebirth, so there's allegedly like a group of 30 families who are very interested in CPS, in helping us find space and helping us. So how could we blend maybe some of that with some of the plans for that upper part of the district to capitalize on those needs? And then I think the, the last and final point that I'll make is, what I love about the school where my children go, or Olivier goes, and where hopefully Lillian will go next, this spring, is that our classroom reflects the diversity of our city. You look in, and it is, I don't know if, if there's, we've modeled to say which schools look just like their city, but this one, I feel like, at least when I walk in the classroom, it looks like I want our city to look. And so as we're looking through this, yes, I appreciate the neighborhood boundaries in my work in the community council work. It's great to have that just part and parcel with what you do. But also that lends to say, how can we make sure that not just our elementary schools, but our high schools reflect the diversity of our community? What will it take? And to me, that is the biggest thing that could come out of growth, is focusing on those high schools and making sure that we build a culture, K-12, where our schools, as best as possible. And that is my fear, frankly, of Hyde Park. If we take some of the students who don't live there, are we going to lose some of our diversity, which many of the parents there, you know, yes, they live in Hyde Park, but one in particular yesterday said, "I don't want to lose our diversity." So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. And I have to ask board members to, to try as much as possible to keep your comments brief so that we can move on. It's exciting, but we got to make sure that people, that we get everybody's comments. So Ms. Bowers, and then Mr. Morosky, and then we'll come on this end. Thank you.
As instructed by Board Member Davis, I'm going to have three points. Keep my tabs.
Only three points.
Only three. I have a lot, but I'm going to keep these for a later, a later time. I have a couple of questions. And talking about transportation, the east and the west, and Spencer and Cheviot, and on the map, Spencer is not identified as a district-wide school with the idea that it would be just for the east side, but Cheviot, space capacity, they're only going to sixth grade. So what happens to those students in the plan if that was the decision? Where would they go? That's the first question. Second question is with our start times.
Where would they go for seventh grade? I want to make sure.
Yes, seventh grade. Yes, ma'am, seventh grade. And then for the start time, which I'm thinking, that's fabulous, that's great, but how would this impact our athletes and sports and interruption of instruction time when we move to that 4:15 time, when most sports, freshmen and junior highs start at 4:30? So that means students will miss instructional time? We can't assume that all of our schools play schools within our district. They play schools outside of our district, and what would that look like? And then the last question is, is potential new west-side high school, is that the idea that either Jacobs Center or the Heinoth property would house that, or would Heinoth be a different school than the career tech training?
Okay, so for your first question, in terms of Cheviot, we thought about really enhancing the college preparatory program at Dater High School to be that feeder pattern there. In terms of transportation as it relates to the late starts, there were two things that we were, at least two things we were asked to do last year in the transportation conversation. And one of the things we were asked to do was to be able to move all of our high schools to a later start within three years. The second thing was to optimize capabilities and reduce our costs. Okay? So in an effort to move our schools to a later start time, it does mean that some schools will end at 4:15, which also helps us to reduce costs by only running two tiers. And so I do believe that a concern that was brought forward many times was a concern about athletics and working and kids taking care of younger siblings as a result of a later start time. And so we've really worked hard to balance what the resolution and the board policy says in terms of late start times with the impact that it has on young people. We can't, we cannot be able, we are not able to start all school, all high schools at eight o'clock so that they all end earlier. I don't know that, that Metro has the capacity of doing that. And to be honest with you, the late starts was a real concern, was something that I, that I was really concerned about as we were doing this work, and asked the team to go back and look again and make some revisions to what times schools start and they end. And we made some adjustments even within the last week and a half. So that is a concern that some of our young people do have regarding ending at 4:15.
Is there a possibility that there will be some in-depth discussion and plans? I'm thinking about the missing instruction for sports is most, what I'm really thinking about. If, if the times don't change for the sports, then that means they will be leaving school earlier.
Yes.
Is what my concern is.
Yeah. Our intent, if I, if I'm understanding you correctly, our intent is not to remove kids from academics so they could go to sports events or sport, or practice. So that was not.
Which means the sports will be pushed back, which means their evenings will be pushed back.
Correct.
To a sport ending maybe at 10 or 10:30 at night, depending on what's going on.
That is exactly what we discussed as a concern.
Yes.
And then there was the last one about Heinoth or the career tech, or which is which? Or is it the same?
No, we were thinking that Heinoth could become a new west-side high school.
Not the career tech?
Correct.
Would this be two schools? Is this the proposal with the, on the form, on the paper?
So we were thinking our, our options are centered around Heinoth becoming a high school and taking a portion of Jacobs, which we already have, and turning it into a career tech training center.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky.
And I'll just piggyback off that and remind the Superintendent of her awesome idea about the Innovation Academy, that hopefully is still somewhere on the table. And also appreciate the work the late starts, as someone who was bullish about that, I appreciate, I know it's been difficult logistically. So I, in the spirit of President Jones's request, will have, I'll shorten mine to three and a half. So first, with Spencer, I just make it known now, I'm, I'm not a fan of the, the college, early college piece at the end, only because, and I wasn't here, of course, I was paying attention out in the community. I didn't sit here, but I don't, I don't feel that's what parents think they were sold when they were sold Spencer. And I think to change it now might damage the, the school. So I, just a comment, that I think Spencer, in the spirit of the equity piece, why it was started, the three-through-12 gifted exceptional school is good. And to Mr. Messer's point, it's, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we get the most we get out of our property tax dollars because expanding Spencer and these other things are not going to be cheap. And so obviously, we're going to be talking about that later today as well. Next piece regarding financial, so the Hyde Park School Plan, in that number, the total number of students, included in that number are the classrooms and the bank. And I'm curious, with the capital improvements to Hyde Park School, is a piece of that bringing those kids back from the bank and then also adding those additional students?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not in the bank anymore?
Correct.
Great. Easy question. Carthage, also potentially a quick question. With the preschool piece, adding the preschools, would, would there be a possibility to have multiple units in that pre-K through two Carthage model? How many, or do you, we have an idea how many units we'd be able to have?
So you're asking, would we have more than one classroom, preschool classroom? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I believe so. Yes.
So Carthage would be pre-K through first.
Yes.
Hartwell, second through eighth. So it'd be multiple classroom?
Correct.
Okay. And lastly, it's probably for Ms. Trimble Oliver. She has, whenever you say, "Do you have this off the top of your head?", the answer is usually yes. Sorry to put you on the spot. Do we know how many students are choosing? on the spot. Do we know how many students are choosing Woodford? So when I think of the PRM piece and I think of the different proposals that are on the docket for Pleasant Ridge Montessori, and I look at the John P. Parker and Woodford ideas, for my decision-making purposes, it would be helpful to know how many students that are far outside the Kennedy Heights neighborhood are choosing Woodford as a magnet. Do we know?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can get that very quickly.
That would, that'd be great. Thank you. And that's it.
We do know that Woodford currently has 349 students.
Total?
Total.
And I think it'd just be, it'd be interesting to know how many of those students don't live in Kennedy Heights, Pleasant Ridge, Madisonville, just in that close area, because if it's two students, I'm sure it's more than that, that live in Westwood that were busing over to Woodford, then it would help influence the decision.
There is a significant percentage coming from other neighborhoods. We've looked at the dot maps in previous meetings, but I don't know the percentage, but I can get that.
Cool. Thanks.
Done. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I want to start with going back to the facilities master plan. When we were closing schools, this board passed a resolution that we would not, that we would not move children when we closed a school from a, to a school that had a lower rating. Okay? We have to resurrect that and kind of do the opposite now, that we will not move children from a school, whether it's by boundaries or whatever, to a school with a lower rating. Okay? Same kind of philosophy. And, and, you know, I know our ratings are kind of skewed right now statewide. Perhaps we can even come up with our own kind of internal way of evaluating our schools to give the community assurance that we're going to make sure that their children are going to be educated at the same level. I know that there's concerns in that, you know, eastern part of town because Pleasant Ridge is busting at the seams. When we started the neighborhood Montessori program at Pleasant Ridge, people said, it's never going to work. It always has to be a magnet. And look at it now. But, I mean, between Pleasant Ridge Montessori, Kennedy Heights Montessori, which is private, that is, I mean, those people are like, they've drunk the Kool-Aid. The issue isn't so much Woodford, but the issue is what happens after Woodford? Because when children are moved out of Pleasant Ridge Montessori with the opportunity to go to Clark, that, you know, that's a big deal. I mean, Schroder, and I've said this, as Ms. Bolton has, she's quoted me forever, we need a third Montessori high school. And actually, I'm going to throw out there, you know, if we add another Montessori elementary, whether it's, you know, classes at J.P. Parker or Woodford or whatever, because there's such interest there, that Schroder may be considered as the third Montessori. That's just an idea because we have so much interest in that side of town and people are not going to willingly give up not just Pleasant Ridge Montessori, but the opportunity to give it, you know, go to Clark. So that's, that's something I wanted to throw out. Another concern I have is Sailor Park. And what I would be very interested in knowing is how many students we're losing in the Sailor Park area to Three Rivers. And we've talked about that. I know it's a small number, but we've also talked about offering some kind of a unique high school option for the children in Sailor Park who don't want to travel, you know, a half an hour, 45 minutes to Dater and West High back and forth, because Three Rivers is so much closer. And so it's a more tight-knit community, like Sailor Park is a tight-knit community. Anyway, I didn't want us to forget Sailor Park in this mix, even though they're, you know, they're small. And as far as the late start times and extracurriculars, and I know this is being done, I think, in Canton, but is Jessica Shelley still here? We're gonna have to think about dinner for these kids. Because, you know, if we're dismissing at 4:15 and they need tutoring, study tables, practices, those children are going to need to eat. And if they're eating at 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock, they're going to need something before their extracurriculars. And I know it's being done like in Canton. I isn't, I think that's where they're doing it. But that's some, another consideration that we have to add to make sure the kids are cared for. So anyway, those are kind, that's kind of my input.
Okay. Going down the line, Mr. Davis.
I've just got a couple, couple of questions. My greater concern is what, what's the current, what's the plan? Like this starts community engagement. So like, what's the plan? What are you thinking in terms of, what do you, how do you want to hear from the community? How long out are you looking before there are going to be some decisions made? This, by the way, appreciate you guys' work. Definitely, you can tell you guys have put a lot of thought into this. But my first thought is what, where are we going from here?
So there is some growth that will automatically happen next year. We'll be moving forward. Those things, those schools who are already in this document, The Leap, CANS, those schools we know for sure will grow. The thought is that we would bring to the board a set of offerings or options to explore and consider, gather additional feedback from the board before moving forward. So the only thing that we are right now scheduled to move forward on would be those schools who are currently scheduled to grow anyway. We have quite honestly looked at the entire offerings in terms of building them out for the next, quite honestly, five years. So some pieces will take a little bit longer. And so because we had not had a full conversation with the board on the options, I didn't bring you the build out, but we have kind of segmented it out in terms of when these things could happen, in terms of, quite honestly, the community engagement that needs to take place, but in also the capacity of the district to move this quickly on all of these projects.
A huge piece of that conversation, I think for the board, needs to occur at the board work session, where, because today was specifically designed just to react to what she was presenting, because we had asked the superintendent to provide these options so we could think through. But I mean, when you talk about really getting into the weeds and developing a timeline for when things to happen, I think at the board work session, we're gonna serve a block of time, reserve a block of time to do what I think you're asking.
I appreciate it. My brain is, is transitioning to a seat that's behind her, not in front of her. So it was very much a community-oriented question. Is there an administrative reluctance to second shift school? I know, I noticed that there was no conversation about, thinking about how we utilize our buildings, the ones we have now twice, like in the evening. Is there just a reluctance to that?
There isn't a reluctance. Quite honestly, it just did not come up in this conversation at all. I know that there was interest, quite honestly, president of CFT Sellers has mentioned on more than one occasion, a second shift school. At one point in time when we had a different grant writer, we actually asked her to explore and look into possibilities of grants for second shift schools. We personally have not researched to find a place where second shift schools are working effectively. That doesn't say that it doesn't exist, but we're open to the idea. It just didn't come up.
And my final question is about, I think, I remember Messer brought it up. Was there any thought about trying to acquire the old Hoffman School to assist us with Water Hills?
Say it one more time.
Was there any thought around trying to acquire the old Hoffman School around assisting us with Water Hills?
We did not discuss that, but it's definitely something that we could explore.
Thank you, Mayor Chair.
Like, can I get Ms. Bolton in person? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Appreciate the work. And I would say to that quote, I think we've already done the changes hard first, very frankly, because I think that's what the last 12 years has been about, is shifting this culture to where we are now. And now we're in the messy part. And that's good. That's good. First of all, I'm completely supportive of the east-west piece. And, but that's not just about buildings, but as you've pointed out, it's about programming. So IB on east side, IB on west side, a lot of AP here, and to second what Mr. Morosky said, I'm still fascinated by the Innovation Academy or whatever that was, and keeping two different high schools there on that relatively unattractive campus that needs to be fixed. But the reality is building out the career piece and building out the college preparatory piece. I think that's very good. And I'm siding on the side, is not surprising to anybody, on neighborhood boundaries. I think we can, I think we should move Woodford from being an underused magnet to being a neighborhood high school, a neighborhood school, elementary school. I think you've done the east-west thing when we've got Gamble and Clark, and you're able to do Spencer and you're able to do Cheviot, that's the beginning. You have a number of the high schools possibly that could be east versus west in transportation, if there's adequate programming in those high schools, be it Schroder and Withrow, and also, of course, West High and Dater. My other interest besides having neighborhood elementaries, especially in my part of town, which is the north-central part, is that where we do have large public housing projects like we have at Wynton Hills and we have over at Ethel Taylor and Roll Hill, it's very important to me that those kids that are in that community have five-star preschools and really great starts. And I think that's a national story, if those, if those particular complexes could have that kind of opportunity of walking to school, families being able, I think it all is part of it. Hyde Park, I'm with Mrs. Bates about getting people into lesser achieving schools, but very frankly, looking at the moves you're talking about and knowing our ratings, that's, that's the only example I could think where there might be, if you're moving people out of Hyde Park. Everything else, the move is not necessarily a negative.
The move to Schroder from Hyde Park.
Well, yes, but that, that's not what they had presented, but yes, that would be one.
That's a residual.
But I, I think we could deal with that.
Go ahead.
So, yes, to all the neighborhood boundaries, yes, to east-west. I would like to see us figure out also how to best use the Hughes Annex, as bad as it is, and also the, all the property, not property, but the facilities that we have across from Taft. I don't know that that makes the best use of what we have there, knowing that SCPA is going to have to expand and possibly Taft eventually. But I'd like to see that, knowing we're going to be talking about this at the retreat that's, and there.
Okay. Mr. Messer, short and sweet.
Okay. So as we're preparing for that work session meeting, I think it'd be interesting to get a, you did the kind of dot map of where people live. That was great back when we were talking about transportation. I'd love to see where are all the students, not just CPS students, where are all the students? And are there particular spots where, a lot of vouchers, are there particular spots where there are a lot at charter schools, again, many of which you think they're at CPS? And I'd love to be able to kind of, kind of put that in the background to say, well, maybe we haven't engaged with a particular part of the district as well as we could, and go engage and say, what would make you choose CPS? What has made you make another choice? And kind of think through this growth mode into that, those audience of kids not in our seats today.
Yes. So, and final comment, I'm gonna, I'm definitely gonna keep mine brief. I heard a lot of excellent options and things that I like about this plan. I heard a few things that I'm not so fond of, but I will not go into those today because I want to go through it like a fine-toothed comb. But one of the things that always concerns me when we talk about this kind of change is who is it impacting? For me, we're talking about diversity and equity. Gen, generally, it's poor kids who are most impacted because we tend to move them the most, because a lot of times they don't come forward, the families don't come forward and express their opinions. So I want us to be cognizant of that. So when we're looking at data, I mean, I'm curious to know with all of these wonderful options, who are the kids who are going to be most impacted by the change? So the one struggle I had, like, for example, with the Hyde Park plan about no siblings, my opinion, I agree with you, it has policy implications, but this whole thing, in my opinion, has policy implications for our enrollment process. I don't want to do something at one school that we can't really figure out how it works for the big picture. So other than that, I'll, I want to look at it more and I'm sure at our more, at our robust conversation at the board work session, we could sort of work through a lot of these. Thank you so much. This is excellent work. We have the bomb administration team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the entire team who worked tirelessly on this. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move a little quicker here. Does anyone have any kudos? Yes, Mr. Morosky, quickly.
Quickly. I have a couple of kudos. So I was at the All Children Thrive learning session on behalf of my day job, and our own Dr. Bunger and Deputy Superintendent Amat were there, and they represented us extremely well. Well, I need to highlight that Dr. Bunger had intro music. And some of you were there and saw Dr. Carrie Bunger's little dance instruct as she went up to the stage in front of hundreds of people at the Sharonville Convention Center. It was amazing. I'm not going to show you, Board Member Davis. I'll show you later. And Deputy Amat expressed her disappointment that she didn't have intro music. So we're gonna have to work on that next time, because I know she would have shown her up. But everybody needs to know that CPS was talked about. Again, I was there in my, my other half, but we were talked about, and Deputy Amat can attest to this, all day long, as being a shining example, all the things that the superintendent just talked about, all the things we've been talking about all morning. We were held up throughout the entire day as not only doing great by kids, but being awesome partners for these varied, whether it's public health institutions, et cetera, in the city. I'm finished.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
I have a kudos for Pleasant Ridge Montessori and Dater Montessori families who were present at a basketball game on Friday night during inter, is it intermission? Halftime, thank you. Halftime, and they actually had a small competition. And the kids and families enjoyed the opportunity for the students to have the experience on a bigger stage during the high school halftime. And I was just hoping that more elementary school, the performances or small competition, they would be able to bridge better with our high schools being able to be present during experiences and opportunities like that. So kudos to Pleasant Ridge Montessori parents and students. I don't know who won, but they both played very good basketball in Dater Montessori.
Okay. Other kudos? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I wanted to point out to people in the audience that there were four little children at North Avondale this morning who had a birthday party together. One of them was Ryan's daughter. And they decided, with the encouragement of the adults, that they really didn't need presents and that they would like to give their, their presents to other children who might not be receiving presents this holiday season. The word kind of got out in the community and they collected over, oh, about $1,000 in gift cards. And it was presented this morning to Project Connect. So. So watch, Fox 19 covered the presentation, so it may be on the news later on.
Great. Any other kudos? Okay. All righty. Ms. Bates, I understand there are no retirements?
No retirements.
Okay. So we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes and we're gonna be firm with that. Three minutes of speaking, Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. I will take them in threes. Craig Rosen, Drew Schwachen, I'm sorry, Drew. I know who you are. I'm sorry. Drew, and John Reese.
Good morning, soon to be afternoon, President Jones, Board Members, Superintendent, and Treasurer Wagner. First off, I gotta share some love with you, Board Member Davis. I wholeheartedly support the motion or the resolution that your board is going to be discussing later. I was proud to stand up here at your swearing in. I'm proud to stand here before you today. I would add that it's not only our children who are better off, but our families and our businesses and our communities for your keen eye into equity and to bettering our district. So, thank you. Second, I also wanted to thank Director Shelley. Your good food purchasing program efforts and your passion for health and wellness has led our district and continues to lead our district. has led our district and continues to lead our district, and I'd like to thank the ad-hoc committee for adding the Health and Safety Committee. I think it will help with our Director of Dining Services, I believe it is, and so thank you. In addition, growth, what a great problem the district is having with growth. I know it's a little messy, as the superintendent mentions, but I encourage more engagement to the communities around the growth before options are even presented to the board, because as a parent, I can tell you that I have no interest in sending my child to a college campus for 11th and 12th grade. If you look at the future resolution of this meeting regarding College Credit Plus and dismissals of students from that, it's very concerning for parents to be in a situation where we don't have a lot of control. And we signed up for Spencer for the full experience from third grade through 12th grade. We are hard-pressed to get an 11th grade in there, I'm not sure how we're gonna get a 12th grade in there. In addition, I appreciate the attention to Hyde Park School. I would remind everybody, there is still a third option, and that is the Oakley Neighborhood School, and I know we have our President of the Oakley Neighborhood Council here today, Ms. Colleen Reynolds. I know she wholeheartedly supports this effort, as does the community, and we look forward to engaging in that with you as well. And then lastly, I also support the renewal of the superintendent's contract. I think it's been fantastic to have this new direction. It's been very refreshing to see the focus on equity, your passion and your commitment, and so, kudos. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew?
Hi, thanks for letting us speak here. I am Drew Schwatchenow, I'm the PTO of Clifton Area Neighborhood School, and I came today to speak towards a meeting I wasn't able to come to last week for the, or not last week, at the end of November. First, I want to say thank you so much. You guys do amazing work, and watching the school grow from the beginning has been amazing, working with so many of you and speaking to so many people in this room. You have a fantastic group of leadership here. And I wanted to speak towards the Student Achievement Committee meeting about renaming, potentially renaming CANS. Last year, we went through a renaming process, and we considered the name Gilligan, and there was a few issues that arose with considering that name, and I wanted to make sure that you are all aware of our previous work. I know that you want the process to be as easy and inclusive and non-controversial as possible, but I, having gone through this last year, over a hundred parent hours of gathering community input and presenting at different community councils and getting online forums, it was a lot of work. And then, to have that go forward into this process where I'm feeling like maybe the renaming, we're gonna re-enter it again when we thought we just renamed ourselves and it was a permanent solution, and it was spoken to that way during the LSDMC minutes and doing all that stuff, it feels like a big step backward when we're trying to grow and we have so much to do. And towards the growth, it's, it's been amazing to, to watch all of these people come out, do so much work towards the name Clifton Area Neighborhood School, to create all kinds of branding around it. The teachers have created stickers that represent all the different values using, using our symbols that we've, that a parent has created using great branding standards, and we've invested thousands of dollars into buying T-shirts for every kid that says Clifton Area Neighborhood School, and it's just daunting to think of redoing that whole process, and when we're, we have a lot, a lot to do. And I just wanted to state that very clearly. The, the controversiality, speaking towards the controversiality of it, there was an issue that came up as we were trying to figure out the name. When Gilligan was mentioned, immediately there were counters of, well, we should name it Levi Coffin, or we should name it Barack and Michelle Obama, we should name it Ruth Bader Ginsburg. So, I think that there's more there that I, it would be difficult to deal with. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
That dreaded beeper for a three-minute presentation is always daunting. But again, my name's John Reeves, I'm a proud parent of a CANS student. You guys might remind, remember me from the last time I spoke about child sexual assault prevention. Although I'm not here to talk about that today, I couldn't pass the opportunity up to say thank you to our newest person who's involved, it's Dr. Jennifer Williams, who's agreed to take the lead in CANS to create a more robust curriculum. So, I've sent you guys all the recap of the work to date, and my ask for the board and superintendent stays the same, is to be, can you to be advocates for the work, and then eventually to provide financial funding to bring this to life by the beginning of next school year. Now, to the reason I'm here, I'm gonna tag on to the coattails of Drew, and I wanted to request that CANS was removed from the list of schools to potentially be renamed for, for Mr. Gilligan. I have five main reasons to support this. The first is the, the surveys we did with the PTO and LSDMC, that the overwhelming majority wanted to keep CANS or some version of the Clifton Area Neighborhood School. Just like Drew said, the LSDMC found that the idea of renaming for someone was particularly controversial right now. The third is about the equity I feel like our neighborhoods already have, and it's a lot about diversity and inclusion already. It's a lot of different people who come together with different backgrounds and appreciate that, that diversity. And we, we are really proud of having a name that focuses on our community and that diversity. The fourth is about the distraction that Drew also mentioned. As you know, it takes a lot of man-hours, I'm sorry, people-hours, to bring a new school to life, and I'm afraid that it could become a distraction to the parents, the teachers, and the staff that are really trying to make that happen. And the last one is, I feel like renaming the CANS school for Mr. Gilligan right now wouldn't honor the work that he's done for our state and for our country, since we don't have an overwhelming majority of our community that's behind it. I think I want to make sure that, that his legacy is honored the right way, and it doesn't feel like this is the right time or place. So, for those five reasons, I just wanted to reiterate again my ask to remove CANS from the list of potential schools to be renamed. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. The next three speakers, and I, excuse me if I mispronounce the name, Gabby Becktrup?
Gabby, we scheduled you. Get your door.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Chris Patton, Melissa Kerschner, Todd Redding?
He also left.
He left? Okay. Marissa Rowe?
My name is Chris Patton. Our son Cole is a sixth grader at Spencer. He started there two years ago when the school opened. We also have a second grader who we hope will go to Spencer next year. We live in College Hill, and originally, we came from Fairview to Spencer. Our son has told us that at Spencer, he feels like he finally belongs. He feels like he's found his place, and to us as his parents, that is huge, like, it's everything. The sense of community and caring for every single student, and acknowledging all of their gifts, it's just a few things that make Spencer, Spencer a really truly special place. We signed on to the Spencer program with the long game plan of knowing that our kids could go there through high school. That was a big factor in why we chose it. And there simply isn't enough room in the building for all the grades. It's a pretty small space. There aren't science labs, there isn't a library, the gym and lunchroom are small, the hallways and stairwells are really, really small, like, for big kids, and it's because the building just wasn't meant for high school students. We've been so impressed by how the amazing staff and students at Spencer have made the best of the building constraints and challenges, working with them best they can, even though it's just been increasingly more challenging as they've added grades every year, and they'll add 11th grade next year. I truly applaud all CPS has done to take the chance on new schools. I think it is really important, and I thank you every day in my head for opening Spencer in the first place. Now, we're asking you to continue supporting us the way we need to be supported. Please help us in building a high school that our kids need and deserve. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you.
I am Melissa Kerschner, and I am a proud parent of one graduated CPS student, and I currently have three children still in the district, and two of them are at Spencer Center. We too chose Spencer Center more with the long game plan in mind, and we're very excited about another option besides Walnut, because it is so crowded, and Clark does not necessarily fit every learning style. And so, having four children, I have very four big different personalities, and so that has been something that has been a true gift to our family. As we have lived in College Hill, we've recently moved out of there, we're in Amberly Village, and learning how to view schooling and education through equity eyes sometimes can be challenging. And so, you know, in some ways, I feel awkward, like, oh, I don't want people to think it's because, you know, we're middle-class and we're just looking out for us. That's not it at all. One of the things that I appreciate about Spencer is that it has provided not just my students, who were in a school that did not really have any gifted or things going on for them, but I looked around that first day at all of the kids that were coming from other schools that didn't have access to those, and their parents didn't know how to ask for it, and they weren't being heard. And in that moment, I thought, okay, this is a good thing. But if we're gonna continue to move forward in that mindset, we have to be committed to growing the school and growing it well and intentionally. And as a parent of a child who's getting ready to try to figure out what comes next, because she's in sixth grade, I will be honest, it is a little, it is a huge risk for me to say, well, we'll just stay here and just kind of trust that things will work themselves out. We've already kind of done that for three years, like, being there in those early stages, but high school is a whole different set of, that's, that's just a whole big deal, because it, it counts differently. And so, as we are thinking, and as you guys have this daunting task, I was so excited about your plan that you presented, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is amazing. There are a lot of unintentional consequences to decisions that are made as a knee-jerk reaction. And so, as you are looking forward, I just hope that you will keep in mind that Spencer is serving kids in third grade, that's like eight, and then having 18-year-olds all housed in one building that really is not designed for that, that has some unintention, there are some unintentional consequences that come with that. So, good luck. I am glad I'm not sitting in your shoes. But again, we are very thankful for Spencer. Thank you for taking a risk on Spencer, and I hope that as you continue to move forward, that you help and you engage with us, engage with our LSDMC, engage with our community. We want to talk. We're not really keen on the college idea for 11th and 12th grade, that's not really what we signed up for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
My name's Marissa Rowe, and I'm a proud parent of Cincinnati Public Schools. Over nine years ago, I first spoke in front of this board, not all of you, obviously, as one of many community members urging CPS to reopen our neighborhood school. Together, as community members and school administrators, we took a leap of faith and worked hand-in-hand for two years to open in 2012 what we now call Hyde Park School. From that moment on, we again worked together to create a top-notch school from nothing, going from an enrollment of 120 students to the 550 we have today. So, thank you. With this great success has come tremendous growth, and almost immediately, it became clear the current building would not meet our needs. Almost four years ago, it was proposed by CPS to temporarily house classrooms in a bank across the street while a permanent solution was found, four years ago. In our continued spirit of working together with CPS and with an understanding that there is need throughout the district, we have worked hard to continue to provide an amazing education while we wait. In addition to housing classrooms in a bank, we have phased out our magnet program, given up our computer lab, four of our teachers are on carts. We have turned offices into classrooms and closets into offices, and we have completely rebuilt the playground to allow for both physical education classes to be outdoors and outdoor classrooms. And yet, our numbers continue to grow. I can honestly say, we have done everything we can to work with the district and maximize the space we currently have. Hyde Park School has reached the point where the excellent education we are providing will suffer without an expansion of the building. While I'm heartened to hear Ms. Mitchell's proposals and appreciate all of the hard work that has been done, I'm here to plead for your help to make this expansion happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. So, thank you to all of our speakers, and we will move on to our board matter topic, which I'm sure lots of people in the audience are here for that. As, as we all are aware, for a number of months, we've been in a sort of back-and-forth dialogue with the city about the tax, the 1999 tax abatement agreement. More recently, and, and first of all, before we get in, delve into the discussion, I want to take the time on behalf of the board to really thank our community for giving your support of the district, for representing your interests as a community to City Council and to us. And I think that I have certainly learned a lot more, and thank you for the, the tip presentation from, from CFT. I've learned a lot more as an individual person that really helps me in my thinking about all of this. So, there are still some key decisions to be made, and even more recently, there have been a number of recommendations that have been made and counter-recommendations. So, what the intent of this discussion is today, we, 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 I'm hoping that we come out with consensus about what, or a decision about how we move forward. But I thought it would be important for us to hear, get an update, and I've asked the superintendent to have someone give us an update, on where are things right now, what is the conver, what are the conversations that are being had, what are our options, and then we can talk about our next steps. The infamous Mr. Hoing.
Infamous? Thank you. So, so just kind of a status report on where we are in our discussions and negotiations with the city. The, the board's proposal has been consistent throughout. You know, our, we've maintained a consistent position that we really haven't changed. The city has said that they would like the ability, they would like to continue to have the ability to do incentives and abatements after the expiration of the 99 agreement. They've said that they would like to stop paying us the $5 million a year that they have paid us for the last 20 years pursuant to that agreement, and, and the board's response has been open to that, provided the percentage pilot from developers, you know, that, that we receive is increased from 25% to 33%. That, that was in the presentation that the administration made to you in, in May. It was, it was the same proposal that the board essentially passed in a resolution in June, and it's consistently been in our correspondence to the city. So, so the CPS proposal is that the pilot payments should increase from 25 to 33%, in part to, again, replace the $5 million a year that the city would like to stop paying to the board. If there's no agreement that's reached, the agreement expires on December 31, 2019. Pursuant to its terms, project approvals remain in place. Payments to CPS from those approved, prior-approved abatements shall also continue. The city will not have the ability after December 31st to award or exercise the full array of abatements that are available under state law. They'll have some ability, but not, not the full abatements that they currently, you know, enjoy the ability to award. We've heard from the city, you know, so, so one is, the city could accept our proposal. I think we've communicated it to them time and time again. If there's no agreement, the agreement could expire. The third is several proposals that we've heard from the city. The city communicated to us a balanced development proposal, which, in the administration's view at least, was disappointing, considering it, again, involved no, apparently involved no continuing- disappointing considering it, it again involved no, apparently involved no continued payments to the district. The $5 million payments would discontinue, but kept that pilot percentage exactly the same as where it's been, 25 to 27%. And, and for that reason, that was a disappointing proposal to us. This week, we've not gotten any formal correspondence, but I understand that there's been some proposed 90-day extension of the current agreement. What we've not heard is whether, you know, again, we view the status quo as $5 million cash payments to the district per year plus that 25, 27% pilot. So, you know, we've heard before from the city that they would like to continue the status quo and continue to have the ability to offer abatements at that 25 to 27% pilot payment to us. What we've never heard from the city is that, that the cash payments would continue. So, I guess in our view from the administration, if, if they propose, if the city proposes to extend that agreement by 90 days, we think that the cash payments of 1.25 million, which is one quarter or 90 days worth of, of payments should also be included if we're truly going to continue the status quo. Otherwise, we're, we'd be agreeing to their proposed percentage of 25 to 27% with, without any cash payments. So, and, and then the, the additional city proposal was these TIF districts that they're creating today. And again, that, that's sort of an 11th hour proposal to create new 30-year TIFs in, in 15 areas of the city. So, I'm happy to take your questions or...
Okay. Board members have questions or comments? Here in Ms. Bates?
So, in general on the agreement or specific to what he just spoke about?
Go ahead. Anything. Yeah.
So, you know, I, I will go on record to say, I think an agreement is the best option. Now, the question is, how do we get to a mutual agreement of what, what that looks like from a percentage point? And I will just say, probably the, the most frustrating piece to this is what I feel is like a, a lack of commonly understood information. We have our data and the city, no matter who you are in, in the city, they have data and things don't seem to, to mesh what, what we have and then maybe what I hear from some of our partners at city council. And I think no matter if it's a, a work environment or this or whatever, the process that allows everybody to align on some basic fundamental facts and assumptions would then allow us to get to a much better outcome. And so, I do believe that a possible way to go about this is the extension with the full, to your point, the full amount, including the, the percentages and the lump sum prorated for the 90 days. I believe that is a, a very fair option for us to then enter into almost like mediation because, you know, we've got to get people on the same, you know, we heard somebody from the press told me, well, I heard from them that you guys weren't sharing information. Well, I don't know that there's a single thing that anybody here at the district would have kept from anybody. But, but if, if we have a mediator, potentially that's an attorney and a, an accountant who can make sense of what is a very complex situation here. And, you know, with all due respect, you know, I'm not sure that the, the city has somebody who's an expert in school funding. We have incredible attorneys, incredible people who know things about day-to-day operations of a city, but school funding, even some of the most talented people around the state even call our treasurer for advice and helping them understand. And so, my opinion is, A, we are better served if we can get to a, an agreement. B, I think to get there is going to be some effort to make sure that as we're telling our story, we're kind of doing that in a way that kind of brings us together with a third party that we can all mutually agree to. Because, you know, there are factors, for example, factors that I've heard to say, well, but you're getting skyrocketing enrollment. Well, we need to show factually. Based on real world today, that's not helping us in the state funding formula. I heard from the city that, well, TIFs, well, you know, that's taken in consideration as you, as it relates to the school funding. Well, every bit of research I did over the past week said TIFs were not included in the school funding formula or the loss of revenue due to TIFs specifically. So, you know, my opinion is, we've got to get kind of a third party just to take out of this he said, she said, and, and really get to a common set of assumptions, common set of facts and figures, common set of understanding how school funding works. And I believe then, all, all the individuals at the table then looking at the same facts, then make a decision based on that. But what I believe our biggest obstacle is, is we're looking through something that we believe and the city is looking through something they believe. And I'm not here to say one is right or the other. It's just they're different. And until we get that aligned, I don't think we'll do what's best for our city and our children.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I have a little different take on this. I believe we have had a third independent party look at this and Ms. Wagner, our treasurer, did contract with a, a consultant who has no relationship with or interest in the district, who understands state funding and came up with the conclusion that we are supporting and have strongly supported, but this information hasn't been well received by the city. I don't know how we're going to find a second expert somewhere who knows more than this expert. I asked the city to take a look at the results of, of this consultant's work, which our board has been supporting. I've also heard that, you know, what does the district know about economic development? And I'm here to tell you that we are the architects of the largest publicly funded project in the history of Cincinnati with the facilities master plan, over a billion dollars. And the reason why we've increased our, our enrollment to over 6,000 children to date over the, since the completion of the plan is because of that project. And we are one of the few urban cities, not only in the state, but in the country, that's increasing their population. And I am saying here today, I strongly believe it was because of our economic development plan that drove that. So, we do know a lot about economic development. So, I'm here to say that instead of the, that instead of the extension, even with the prorated $5 million payment, and I'm, I will ask the board for support later on, that we direct our treasurer to develop a tax incentive review committee that begins on January 1st. And we have people who can do this. In Columbus, that's what they're doing. They have a group of about 30 people with board members, with administration, with people from the community, people who are experts in state funding, who come together and make these decisions. And quite truthfully, sometimes they get more than 33%. So, just saying, sometimes not. And it may be a wash, but we have what, what we call, and the city has went to, an audit committee. We have more applications for this audit committee than we have spots on this committee. We have people that are meeting tomorrow and we're going to be considering new applications. So, instead of turning people away, we can accept the new applications and we can ask people who have been serving us on our audit committee, who know our district, who know state funding, who know finance, who know accounting, who are dedicated to this work, to shift over to the tax incentive review committee. And I assure you, these people are highly qualified. So, we can begin this recruitment tomorrow at audit committee, if that's the will of the board, and January 1st, move forward with the tax incentive review committee. Now, if after several months, the city is still interested in an agreement, that doesn't mean we're not going to negotiate with the city, but instead of an, an, an extension, I believe that we're poised just to go ahead and, and move forward. We can continue negotiating with the city, but this will also give us a feel for, is this going to work? You know, is this going to be to the district's advantage? Ms. Wagner is already doing some research to see how this is working in Columbus, so we can get some advice from them as well. So, that's, that's something that I'm going to be, that I'm putting before you and that I'm prepared to make as an assignment if that's the board's wish.
Just, just a question of clarification for Ms. Bates. So, the third-party review that, that you referenced, that wasn't the Steve Dreehaus stuff, was it?
No, no, no.
It was the first, because I think I missed that, but it was an earlier present?
Oh, no. Ms. Wagner can explain that.
So, I contracted with Mike Sobel, who is a recently retired treasurer, but he was also the state expert on the Cut Patterson formula and he worked for the Department of Taxation. So, he's recognized as a state expert on school foundation funding.
Okay. So, you have a point, but I also want to finish mine. You want to go ahead?
Well, as it relates to that, I mean, I'm just trying to say, you know, would we accept the opinion of somebody that the city hired without saying what we would want? So, not that we didn't have an independent, you know, person, but I think in, in negotiations, you want everybody to participate in the process of within what becomes the, you know, the, the reality. Because I, I wouldn't have, if I was negotiating with somebody, they say, hey, we've got somebody who's going to give us the expert opinion, we'll give that to you. And I would say, oh, really? I don't know what your agreement was. Did you have a relationship? So, I just want to say that, you know, I, I don't know that that in the spirit of negotiations with, with trusting relationships, that type of thing, if, if the other party didn't have a participation in that.
Okay. So, just to, I'd like to finish my comment. I absolutely don't support an incremental steps, that moving from 25 up to 33 over 30 years, because we're still losing money. So, I don't agree with that. I can see the benefits of both the, the recommendations or the options that are being raised here. My question though is, being, given that the agreement expires the end of, of December, the city is no longer obligated to pay us the $5 million prorated. So, we lose money in that sense as well. Also, I forgot my, I lost my thought on that. But, so we lose money, right, on that for the $5 million, correct?
Excuse me. The city's obligation for $5 million annual payments ends on December 31st.
Okay. And then my next point is, it's a what if. So, what happens if the, we don't have an agreement, we have to do all of these individual abatement requests as a district? That's going to impact the day-to-day operations of, of our work as well. So, I, I think, you know, I, I think both options are worth weighing, but for me, I don't want to, I don't want to see us have to go through another whole process where it's going to cost us even more to get the work done than, than where we're at now. So, yeah, I don't know. Ms., Ms. Bolden?
Yes, thank you very much. First, I want to thank the administration and the people that have been negotiating this on, from our position. The single most important thing a school board does is provide the financial support for the education of the children. There's only seven people in this town that have that responsibility. So, we have to hold firm to be made whole. We just saw outline of $100 million probably for our growth. We have kids coming in that need more help than ever. We cannot afford to not get every single dollar that is due us, especially since the dollars that we're asking for, we asked the public and the public granted us those dollars. They didn't grant anybody else, a developer or a city. They granted it to us because of our mission and what we have to do. So, I have concerns about us having a third party examine our numbers. I practice what we all preach and that is, our experts are sitting right over there. And if our treasurer tells us that it's 33% and our attorney has advised us as to what needs to be done, I don't want to negotiate with ourselves. I would prefer to say, I'll live with the, the, how shall I say it, the end of the agreement and I would assign not only what Mrs. Bates is assigning, but I would assign also what are the legal ramifications of us having an agreement end. But I stand by the 33%. That makes us whole. That's our responsibility. I don't have an interest in extension of even three months because we have to develop a budget. We have to develop plans that have to take place and might ruin the second year of our strategic plan if we're waiting on the city to figure out what they need to know. We asked them to make us whole and six of them said they would make us whole. They said that publicly. All they need to be convinced of is what makes us whole. And this very simple math, as I understand, even this social studies teacher can understand that math. And we need to make sure that we get what our children deserve and we don't need to extend it and we can pursue other legal matters. And if we have to do the work for a few years or a few months or a few weeks, so be it. Because I don't want to sign a bad agreement that then makes it impossible for us to have the money that we need.
I, I'd like to, I know Mr. Messer has a follow-up question, but Ms. Bates, can you kind of help us understand what this tax incentive review committee would do?
Well, we have them for our, for Chevyitt, for Madder, for Amberly. We already are doing this, we have an agreement with the city, so we don't need, haven't needed to this point, a tax incentive review committee. I actually served on the Chevyitt committee for several years. Currently, I believe Mr. Our, our outside counsel, Dave DiMuzio, is serving on these committees. And there's one for Hamilton County. So, it's a group of, of elected officials, city administrators, district administrators and private citizens who look at, at abatements and decide, you know, their worth and negotiate the, the amount of money that will be abated. It's being done in Columbus and it's, from what I understand, they're, they're doing pretty well with that. So, what I'm proposing is that we take this on and this would be a committee of, you know, in Columbus, there's about 30 people, I believe, on this committee, combination city, district, board, private citizens. And we call upon people who have already served on, in this capacity, on audit. That's a good example because those folks understand our budget. They understand the impact. They've been following this abatement negotiations along with us. We've been disclosing as much to them as we know and, you know, and to the public event, you know, that, that we have been. So, that's what the committee would be comprised of. It wouldn't be necessarily hiring a new department, but it would be this group of professionals who would come together and examine the opportunities and then make the subsequent decisions that would come before the administration for review and then the administration would make their recommendations to the board.
Okay. And Mr. Messer?
So, one, one question for clarification and then a comment. But, so, you know, without an agreement, then, you know, obviously we would be engaged in, in having say into those. But if there are these new TIF districts, then we would be excluded from conversation in any of those districts because in there, it would be specifically called out what percentage by law they would have to give? Is that correct?
So, TIF districts are different than abatements and CRAs. TIF districts are areas of the city identified by city legislation that instead of, that, that developers or property owners within those districts pay the same amount of taxes. They, they aren't abated. They aren't exempt from paying taxes. They pay the same amount. The difference in a TIF district is the money is directed instead of to the county auditor for distribution to us and the other taxing entities. It's, it's the, the increase in value, the taxes on that increase in value go to a city TIF fund that then can be used for improvement projects within that TIF district. So, you know, again, as I understand, the city's legislation, it hasn't even been passed at this point. I, I think they're considering it today. The, the proposal is for the creation of 15 new TIF districts, kind of scattered throughout the city. And, and they propose those for another 30-year period, but, but to continue to pay us, we actually get 27%. to pay us, we actually get 27% on the TIF districts. Still not the 33% we're insisting upon, and it will be for the next 30 years without those annual $5 million payments. That sort of makes up that gap. Does that answer your question on the TIF districts?
Kind of. I mean, I think the, you know, there, I think we negotiated to get 27% within the TIF districts in the agreement.
Correct.
But without agreement, then it's no greater than, they couldn't offer no greater than 75% in TIFs, as I read in the Ohio Revised Code.
That's right. And then without an agreement, the CRAs are limited to 50%, whereas now they can offer 100% CRA.
Yeah. So then my comment is, I, I want to just make sure that I'm clear, because obviously, this is a very sensitive topic, and everybody's, you know, hanging on every word. I would be crystal clear, I have no reason to doubt anything that we've offered up on our 33% and how we got to that, and I feel very confident in that. I also believe that I know six people on council who said they support the district in making us whole. What I also know, though, is they're saying, well, based on what we're seeing, this is what makes you whole. And what I'm saying is, I believe we get everybody to the same space if we created an environment where there's trust in the process and we can bring them along. It's not that I, I think that our numbers are wrong, it's frankly that I believe that because they're so complex, that by kind of, if, if getting somebody who's neutral helps everybody kind of pull the same numbers together, my, my belief is, we're going to see that the numbers we provided were correct. But we've also created a process, so everybody says, okay, now I feel like I'm voting on something that I actually can see the math and I see the analysis, that can't be argued in. Because I, I have multiple situations on just things that I've heard, they're operating with a totally different set of assumptions and understandings of things that we know that are proven. So, you know, higher level than that, I think we were better served if we start to build partnerships externally with bodies like city council, et cetera, going forward. And, you know, I, obviously, this has created some tension between the two bodies, and maybe our tone hasn't been maybe what it could be, and maybe, you know, there's some ways for us to look at this, but, you know, my, my hope is, for the betterment of our children, that we establish these trusting relationships, et cetera, and one of those ways specifically with city council on this is just make sure everybody's operating with the same information. That's my only request for asking for that extension.
Ms. Bates has a follow-up.
Yes. Six council members said they wanted to make us whole, but seven council members voted for a plan that Councilmember Landsman put forward that does not make us whole. So they can say whatever they want, but it's their vote that counts, and they voted not to make us whole.
But they based it on what they understood whole to be.
It doesn't matter. They voted not to make us whole. And they had the information that our treasurer had and gave them, and they chose not to take advantage of our experts' opinion. They chose another opinion. So they could say, we believe that their information was faulty. They don't. And they voted not to make us whole. So to negotiate further after a vote, that's like asking us to change our resolution. You know, they have their position voted on, we have our position voted on, we've been negotiating, and we haven't gotten past it, so now's the time to make a decision. It's just going to go on and on and on. And then losing the legal counsel that's been working on this. So there's going to be more extensions. We need to stand our ground and make sure that we have what makes us whole according to experts who understand funding.
Ms. Bowers. Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is frustrating that we've gotten to this point. We have, as a body, deliberated on all of this publicly since January. I was opposed to our first resolution. We got a second one, it was a little better. Still didn't think it was great, but we were shooting for the moon and hoping we'd land somewhere, and we did not hear back from the city for three months. So it is, it is a little difficult for me, as somebody who wasn't necessarily always aligned with asking for the moon, to now at this point, to be saying, we need to delay this, when we were dodged and ignored for months on end. We then came back with a sort of boiled-down, more reasonable, I think, here's our three, my opinion, reasonable, here's our three, 33%, five years or 10, said five in their letter, and an annual audit, so that we can know what we're getting, and the city can know, like, what's coming to us, which would be helpful, because to Ryan's point, we are talking about two separate numbers. We're talking about how much we get short-changed, and the city's talking about how much we get. Fundamentally, it's your kindness, two philosophically different conversations. And I also think, I don't know if this has ever been broken down this way, so if I may, I would like, I would like to just take a moment for the edification and the good of everybody to explain where this 33% number comes from. What we get now, plus the $5 million, is going, once the $5 million goes away, the 33% is making up for this, particularly for the state funding freeze. And as everybody who's been here long enough today has seen, we have a whole lot of stuff that's going on, because we are Cincinnati Public Schools. And I reject the comparison to Columbus, and I, you know, I apologize. I know, we keep saying this a lot, Columbus, we're not Columbus City Schools, and we don't want to be Columbus City Schools. With all due respect to my colleagues on the school board up there, we're doing a much better, more innovative job. And we don't want to be Cleveland, we don't want to be Columbus, we want to stay Cincinnati Public Schools. And to do that requires a certain amount of financial stability, which we don't have ever. That's not the city's fault, of course, and, you know, I have long been on record here as saying I support an agreement. And I still support an agreement. I support an agreement, and I support it at the number that does make us whole, which has been proven to me, and I was a skeptic, as some folks should recall, that it is somewhere around 33%. Now, if the 90-day extension helps, I've spoken to people up here, and I'll say it now, I think a 90-day extension is probably good, in good order. Ms. Bates' proposal, I've never, I've worded it this way before, I didn't run for the Development Arbitration Board, I ran for the school board, I don't necessarily want to get into that business. If I have to, then I will, but I don't, to President Jones's point, this, that would shake up our entire work plan, and I don't, I don't want to necessarily get into that. I also don't believe that we will get the amount we think we will if we don't have an agreement. So I think an agreement is necessary. I do. I support an extension. I'd like to hear more about what this third-party would be, because we did have a third-party, but I also hear what you're saying, Vice President Messer, that it was a person, an expert, for sure, but a person we picked, because I could see a conversation where we say, well, that's the city's person, in the same way they might be saying that about us. And so the only fear I have with an extension, but I do support it, because I do think we need to get to an agreement, and I think we can all be adults, and I just wanted to give some backstory up to this point, because it is not as easy as a lot of people are trying to make it. And the TIF, the conversation today, you know, philosophically, I'm not opposed to TIFs, but I am a little rubbed raw by the timing of this, because this is all being hurried now. When we sent a letter in February, and that needs to be acknowledged. Now, I want to negotiate, I want to get the 30-day, send 90-day extension, but I, I am a little frustrated to sort of end where I began, that we're having this conversation now around the holidays, when we started this in Febr- we actually started it last year. We officially started it in February. So I am a little over the, you guys are being unreasonable. I've been trying to be reasonable, and now, you know, I've kind of been forced into this corner. And it's upsetting, because we oversee the education of three-quarters of the city's children. And, you know, the balanced development proposal, while laudable, and certainly the extra 8% going to all the projects that councilmen have proposed, I support quite a bit, actually. It, it's not, it's not a reasonable thing to ask us to accept. If I may, one of my colleagues, Vice President Messer, equated it to borrowing $33 from me and giving me 25 back, and then saying he gave eight to a guy on the street, because he knows that I am really passionate about people experiencing homelessness. That's, that's not good enough. So we need to figure out a deal. I believe that. I'm willing to hear what this third-party might do differently than we've already done, but that 33% number, I think folks need to, it is not a magic number. I was skeptical. I've said as much up here and was convinced. And I, I'll stop in a second, but we are not in a hurry to get this done by December 31st. I think we can have an extension, but I also, I'm not in favor of letting it just expire.
Thank you. I'm going to get Ms. Bowers first, she had her hand up, and then you, Mr. Davis. Okay.
Is there questions from you around your statement about being in favor of an extension? That's an extension with the money, right?
Yeah, sorry. An extension with the, the current state of, yeah, the way things are, the way Mr. Hoen explained it.
With, with the goal, for clarification, an extension with the goal being that we stand firm with our 33%? That's, okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Ms. Bowers.
I just need clarity, Mr. Hoen. I'm, I'm listening, I've been reading, I've been, right now, you don't have any information about this proposed extension. You just heard that there's this proposed extension.
That's what was offered.
That's been offered, or that's what, right, it hasn't been offered, you just heard about it.
Yeah. I, I think it's been discussed in the media, but not, no, there's not been any formal horse.
Right. Okay. So that's philosophical, right now, at this point in state and time, right?
I think that's right.
Okay. So with that being said, our options right now, to me, is if we're either going to, and is there a vote or a conversation today going on in the city council that we're all aware of? Conversation that's going to happen later on?
There is.
About this specific topic?
We think there is, yes.
So we don't know what that conversation is going to be, right? Could be the proposal for the extension, right? I'm with Board Member Bolton in regards to, I'm not interested in an extension. Ongoing conversation to Board Member Morosky, before I even got here, you guys have been talking about this, before I was even appointed to the board and then elected. So it sounds like that the city is really not interested in what we are saying, or even taking seriously what we're saying would make us whole, or even, I know there's been back and forth, Councilman Landsman proposed something different that I read about the other day, about the 27%, the $5,000, continue with that, but then allegedly there's conversation that he's saying, yes, we need to be made whole by 33%, so that's like that back and forth. It, to me, is too much. So I, I think if we need to stick to where we are with the 33, based on information that our treasurer has given us with our expert, and I also think that if not, then we need to talk about other avenues. And that's in my opinion.
Okay. I got Ms. Bolton first, and then Ms. Bates.
Thank you. I think it's important that we find out, and I like that you asked the question, Ms. Bowers, that we have not received an official correspondence or communication. Anything we know about this, we know either in somehow private conversation or through the media. Once again, we are disrespected. If that was really a proposal, it should have come to us. If it's something to be offered, it should have come to us. They told people in the press months and months ago, we were negotiating when you guys weren't negotiating. This has never been too far above board, if you will. And my point is, I think we can move ahead. Our, that number 33 is not going to change, and the fact that when they said, well, the other money that we're not going to have go to the schools will go to housing, indicates that there's going to be more money generated that should be coming to us, to our children, to our growth. So frankly, no agreement right now is better than a long-term bad agreement, and I think they need to know that we're ready to go ahead with what we need to do if we have to make this kind of adjustment. And very frankly, if it weren't for the community and our supporters out there, if you will, putting on the pressure, I'm not sure we would even have seen the other offer that we never got officially. So this is our maximum time to take action or not take action, and I think our children deserve the money that their families and neighbors voted for them.
Ms. Bates, and then Mr. Davis.
This is our last meeting of the year. And from what I understand, this is council's last meeting of the year. So we have to decide something today.
Yep.
If we just go with the extension, hoping they'll give us a proration on the $5 million, and they don't, we're stuck high and dry. So, you know, if, if three months with, you know, with, with the 27% plus the proration on the $5 million, if that's fine with the board, fine, but we need a backup plan. And the backup plan has to be the appointment of a Turk, because if they say no, and we haven't directed the treasurer to organize a Turk, then we have nothing on January 1st. And they know it, they'll definitely say no. They will say no. So we need, you know, we need Plan A and Plan B decided today, so that we have a safeguard and a safety net in place to move forward.
Okay. So we're starting to repeat ourselves. I'm gonna, Mr. Davis wants to speak, Mr. Morosky wants to speak, and then there, I'm going to pose a question at the end of the table, and then we'll come to some consensus about what we want to do. Mr. Davis?
Well, I think Member Bates wrapped up what I wanted to say.
Okay.
But I did have a question in regards to, is Mr. Hoen authorized to accept an extension? Right now, is he already authorized to accept?
No. No, no, no. He's not authorized to accept an extension, and I think in agreement with Ms. Bolton, there's been no formal offer. There has been no, all of this happened through a different level of communication.
Right.
Okay? So...
But to Ms. Bates' point, their meeting is after ours.
Yes.
So there's no need for, well, there may be need for an extension beyond the January meeting, but if he, if he isn't authorized to accept an offer of an extension this afternoon...
No.
It's not an issue.
It's not an issue. Right. Okay. Mr. Morosky, and then Mr. Messer.
I was just curious, and I don't know if we want to do this, if, if, get some insight on where folks' heads are at with having an agreement, period, because, I mean, we're talking about, like, if it's in a bad agreement, then we wouldn't want it, or, but if we had an agreement, that, I'm just curious if my colleagues are aligned that if we had an agreement at this 33% number, that we agree that that would be a good thing to have, that we have, do we have, and I don't know that we've asked that directly, it seemed, okay, so everyone, people want to have an agreement, and I think that's important.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, and I think that's important to note. And we're not going to get one between now and when council starts at 2:00 PM, which is really at the heart of my desire to have an extension. We may still be meeting when they meet, but I, I, I am aligned with, with the extension at the, the prorated rate, assuming that that is part of what the, the council is talking about, and...
Okay. We, we are, we are going to reach consensus about our next steps. Again, I don't want to continue to repeat ourselves.
No.
Any new information, Mr. Messer? And then we'll close it out.
Yeah, so, you know, I think, obviously, we all speak kind of from our perspective, and every piece is valuable, and I think, given the timeline, you know, the setting up of this review group and establishing the processes and procedures and all that, it's not, I can imagine that's a small task. So yet, while they're meeting this afternoon, my recommendation is, we, or, an idea is, we create an offer that says, we want to do what's right for the people of Cincinnati and specifically ensure that we're focusing on our children. We believe there are some facts that maybe not have been fully understood by the part of those people making the decisions, based on some of the very basic questions I was hearing at some of the council meetings, where they didn't have some of the things that I, I just knew just from this work. And that our hope is that we would be able to share that through a process that would be blah, 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 whatever, and then clearly state, and if not, this is what we're prepared to do, what Board Member Bates. But, you know, I think that my whole idea is, I truly believe that the, at least our six really, truly want to support the schools. I really do believe that. And I've had many of them tell me that, which many, many of you as well, have heard that same thing expressed from them. I just believe they don't have the same facts we do, and it's, I don't think anybody's keeping things from them, it's just the people that are collecting the facts for them may not fully understand the school funding, et cetera, and, and the greater implications to all the complexities. to all the complexities that we face.
Okay, so, whatever decision, decision that happens in a few minutes, okay? What happens with the other things that were part of the agreement? The nurses, the school crossing guards, what I, and I'm looking down here for, for a response to that question. And I'm also gonna ask you to weigh in with what your thoughts are and your recommendation, because we've not asked you today.
Okay, so to answer the first question, the, the city quit paying for the crossing guards and the city nurses about 10 years ago. That costs us currently $2.3 million a year. So, we've already absorbed that into our budget. And the only thing that they're continuing to pay for are the school resource officers. And that's not even been discussed in any of our negotiations. In terms of my opinion, it's really simple math, and we don't need another third party to calculate simple math. So, if you take the total millage from the city that a homeowner would pay, there's 12 or 13 taxing entities, our fixed-rate millage represents 33% of that total bill. Anything less than that allows the city to divert the funds that were given to us to educate children to other projects. So, the voters approved our levies to support pre-K-12 education. And so, anything other than the 33%, which is 31.94 mills, our fixed-rate millage, divided by the 96 total millage, is 33%. The State Foundation formula has been ruled unconstitutional four times. It's already harmed us financially. Last year, we lost $5 million in revenues because of the cap, because we're growing faster than the formula that would allow us to grow. They froze us for two years at $205 million, even though our enrollment is growing. And they've allowed the growth of vouchers in community schools, so that costs us another $4 million this year, just this year. And so, the State Foundation formula shouldn't be a part of the conversation. Their argument is that the abated values reduces our, increases our, reduces our property wealth so that state share goes up at 47%. What they're neglecting to see is that the income, which is also part of that wealth index, goes up based on economic development, so conceptually offsets the increase in property values. Regardless, the cap prevents us from getting any benefits out of the State Foundation formula. So, does that make sense? So, I don't know that a third party can help me do math. And 90 days would make it very difficult for us to complete the budget. The five-year forecast will suffer greatly in May, so be prepared for that. And we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions, because the $5 million that we're not getting, I need to take $5 million out of our operating funds to pay that debt. So, that already is $9 million hit to our budget target.
So, we're hurting either way. I mean, it sounds like, no matter what option, we're gonna take a hit of some sort financially.
Well...
'Cause I'm not quite sure.
We're taking a hit from the State Foundation formula changes, right? At 33%, we would be made whole based on the millage that is being charged by the county auditor.
But we're not getting the 33% through this agreement?
Correct.
Is what my, okay. And are we get, will we get our 33% as part of this tax incentive review process? Well, maybe or maybe not. That's my question. How, what is the, I mean, we go through a tax review committee process, and what is the tangible outcome of that? What, what are we hoping we get out of that?
I mean, we don't, we can ask for 40%. I mean, we don't have to hold it, through this process.
But is this through individual negotiation with developers?
We would, we would, we would review, or this committee would review each of the proposals.
Gotcha, okay.
So, some can be 40%, some can be 30, you know, whatever, and that would, you know...
Okay. So, we have, any last comments before we close out the conversation? Briefly?
33, yeah, I've been pretty brief all day. The 33% we would get if they agreed to our number. And we can end this entire thing in the next few days or the next few weeks. And they're sacrificing by not having an abatement, an abatement agreement, because they're not gonna be able to do all the things they've been able to do.
You're talking about the city.
So, that's not attractive, about the city.
Okay.
And if we have to do these other things, we have to do the others. But I, again, we've had no formal proposal to even vote on from the city. We've had only press releases and private conversations. And that's my point, and that's why I think we hold firm on what we, what our experts have said. There's no extension, if there's no extension without any money anyway, there's no extension.
We have to close the conversation.
I'm ready.
We have to close the conversation. Did, did any more value added to what we say, or I, no more like commentaries or anything? We really need them before?
The whole point about, we've not received a formal, they could say at their meeting, well, they've not received a formal offer of what this potentially, my point to this is...
We sent them a resolution. We have, they absolutely did.
Hold on, hold on.
But the question is, specific to the agreement. So, in the negotiations, so as we're updating agreement for the next however much time, was it just assumed that the school nurses and crossing guards were just off the tables? We'd even asked for that. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's actually true.
So, I mean, I, I think just, yeah, I think that's an important gap. You just gave that amount. So, even though we didn't ask for that, just, this is already a delta from the previous agreement. Even though it wasn't fulfilled, it was in there. So, I do think that that has to be called out to say it's not just the loss of the $5 million, it's a loss of the 2-plus million, even though they weren't fulfilling that, which potentially we could've done something about.
Why wouldn't that be a different contract, though?
Yeah.
Why would, that could, that is actually a different contract, in my opinion.
Or that, or that in negotiations, is that thrown in there to say then?
Okay. Ms. Bowers?
I don't.
Okay, all right. So, here are the two options that I'm hearing, and then you're gonna have to help me with parliamentary procedure to figure out how we come to agreement on this. So, the two proposed recommendations. One is to, to extend the contract for about 90 days, to, to engage in a neutral party for mediation? That's...
No, not at all.
That's, that's, that was the proposal.
There's been no proposal. That's been hearsay. No, that hasn't been proposed.
Jen, Jen is our expert. Jen just gave us the map.
I'm making a recommendation.
Can you hold on? This is, this is the proposal that Ryan put forward. So, the proposal is a 90-day extension utilizing a mutually agreed-upon mediator, or not mediator, but someone who could gather the information presented to both parties. Arbitrator, thank you. That was one proposal. And then the second proposal is to create, is to let the agreement expire and to develop a tax incentive review committee, also known as Turk, which I just found out. But anyway, a tax incentive review committee. And we, the district will work through and work with developers to establish our 33%. That's the, that's, those are the two proposals. Go ahead, Ms. Bates, clarifying.
What I heard is that the board would support, as we have been supporting for months, the 33%. We're all nodding our heads at that, right? Our initial resolution. So, we stick to that, and if that's not agreed to, then we move to the Turk. So, we can reiterate...
Okay, that's, that's, I, I heard that.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we're not, no, we don't disagree on the 33%, right? So, if we go through individual, if individual developers come to us, our, what we say is 33%?
Well, no, no, we negotiate through the Turk.
Okay.
That's a different process.
It's all confusing to me.
Remember Bates, where are you at on this?
Is this a question, or, please?
I mean, I wanna get to a decision, too, don't get me wrong, but I also don't wanna hurry it, because we're already being hurried, as I've made clear, and again, very frustrating. But I, I, I think there are more than two proposals. I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but I mean, there was Mr. Messer's proposal, which I've now, after listening and listening, I, I still agree we need a 90-day extension. But if we're all aligned on 33%, I don't think we need someone to come in and check Treasurer Wagner's math. We may need a mediator to come in, that's a different story. I don't necessarily think we need an agreed-upon person to find out another number for us. So, I think that's one thing. And then, of course, the other piece is Board Member Bates's idea of this backup plan, where, you know, we say to the city, before their meeting, ideally, we're interested in a 90-day extension, we would like it at a prorated rate of what it currently is.
That's not what I said.
No, I'm not finished, I'm not finished.
No, you said it was my...
I know, I'm not, I'm not finished talking, though. So, what you, what you did say was that we have that as a proposal, and if it doesn't work, or the city says, no, thanks, we have to have a backup plan. That's what you, that's what you were saying. And so, I think having a backup plan is...
Absent the extension, that's what she wanted.
Right, correct, correct. If, the first thing I said, is not agreed upon, that there is a backup plan of sorts, which is the Turk.
Right, but I didn't say the extension. I said hold to our resolution and then the backup plan.
Okay.
You and Ryan are saying extension and then the backup plan.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay.
Ms. Bolton?
I think we do have to go on, on Member Messer's proposal. But I also think it would not be a bad idea for us, even before we do that as a point of order, to make a motion that the school board is maintaining its request of 33%. And that we all get on the record, all seven of us, saying that that is the only thing that will make us whole. And then we could move to Ryan's position about the next thing, or Melanie's, or whoever. But I think it's important before council meets that they understand that we are united and unanimous in the 33%.
Would you please move a more, a motion forward for that?
May I, but I, but he's got a motion before.
Now, we want a motion to have a unified decision about the 33%.
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we move to have a vote indicating the unanimity regarding our demands for 33% as the only number that will make us whole and get the money that our children need.
I second.
Okay. Is this a voice roll call, voice?
It's still a roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Discussion?
Ms., well, I'm almost scared to say discussion, discussion.
I have, I have a question.
Come on.
I've got a second question. How does this impact future negotiations? 'Cause if you, if, if we say this, 33% is your number.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Even, even if we do a Turk, right? 33% is the number that we're...
I think if, even if...
Well, no, this is with the city, not with independent developers.
Well, I think your point, Carolyn...
This is with the city.
Hold on, Member Jones, I, I think that is my question. I think your point is well-taken. If 33%, if you, if you pass this motion, then even in the Turk, 33% is our number.
Right. I mean, but, but see, and here's where I'm, here's where I'm confused. If we, if we're saying 33% as a united body, why wouldn't it be as part of the Turk? We're negotiating this or working with individual developers. That's the line of thinking that I'm not following.
Because the 33% would be in agreement with the city, independent of our negotiations through a Turk.
Add that to the motion.
So, yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Maybe I can help clear that up. So, under the agreement with the city, we gave them the ability to abate up to 100% without our approval. So, if we were to sign a new agreement at 33%, they wouldn't have to come to us to negotiate anything else on a project-by-project basis.
Right.
They would just give the city that same allowance to go and then negotiate up to 100% abatement. Does that make sense? We wouldn't need the Turk.
Right.
Then I, I make a friendly amendment that we add in agreement, in an agreement with the city. 33% is our unanimous number.
Okay, so the motion, the amended motion is that we, we want to recommend that, at the unity in the 33% for the city agreement?
Yes.
And as the motion maker and the seconder over there, I would imagine we accept a friendly amendment.
We accept the friendly amendment. Okay, all right. What's her name? Jen?
Our expert.
Would you call the vote, please?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so the second proposal, Ms. Bates, would you please put it on the table and clarify in as brief as possible?
I move that absent of an agreement with the city on the 33% by December 31st of this year, that on January 1st, there will be a tax incentive review committee formed that will make decisions regarding abatements. And that the administration and can continue negotiations with the city, but we will have a process in place to be able to negotiate for our fair share.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Messer?
I'm just going back to, you know, it's not that I disagree with that, it's just is the date December 31st, or is it March 31st, in hopes that the people who say they wanna support us and keep us whole, that we give them the opportunity to get there? Because I just feel like I was observing them getting, some of them, getting their information kinda the first time on Tuesday, or whatever the day that was, Monday or Tuesday. And I thought, oh my gosh, some of these basic questions, God, if we just had Jen present them, they could get all this clarified, like, they were, and then some of the responses back, I was like, that's wrong. So, I, my whole intention, though, is just making sure that people have the right information, 'cause I do believe they'll be at the 33% without us having to...
Mr. Davis?
Member Messer, I believe you have some interest on this board for the concept of an extension. And that you should not let your thought process die around an extension and a negoti, I'm sorry, what did we agree to, or, and, and a mediator. I think you should bring that forth in a separate, in a separate motion, see where it lay. I, I don't know, I know you would have my support, but I don't know if you could get to four. I can't count that far, but I, I think to this motion about the Turk, I think it's necessary in that in 11 days, what's the date, 18th, yeah, 11 days, if we don't have an agreement, and then an extension would be an agreement. If we don't have an agreement, this is necessary for the district to be preparing for a tax incentive review committee, separate from...
Just follow, thank you.
Okay, so, the most...
To be clear, then?
Yes.
This is like a, a just-in-case, that we're, but we're all sort of, if 33% we voted on, we agree. We all have kind of nodded tacitly that an agreement with that number would be best. So, this is like, this is an in case, we cannot get to an agreement, not in lieu of, to your point. Because Mr. Messer's motion will have my support as well.
This reads absent agreement. She started with that, absent.
I just wanted, I just wanted to double-check, right, and then repeated at the end, I just wanted to double-check.
Which, okay.
Okay.
But this would, if I may?
Yes.
This would also put in motion the formation of a Turk.
Yes.
Yes, we understand that.
Okay.
Okay. If the city, yes, if we present this to the city, and they say, yes, we'll pay you at 33%, we won't need Turk. Okay, all right. Motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, is there another motion to be put on the table? Yes.
So, I would like to make a motion that we present an offer to the appropriate people at the city. that does not discount our commitment to the 33%, but in an effort to be good partners and to ensure that everyone has access to all the information and the complexity of the information, and making sure that we're also calling out the fact that we aren't getting 2-point-plus million dollars in the other pieces that were included in that original agreement. That's a loss, too. So actually, it's a 7.5-plus million dollar loss just from that agreement. Making sure that we're being very deliberate in the people that are making decisions that the city have access to that full picture in a way that everybody feels good about. And that if we're unable to come to an agreement at the end of that March 31st, we then go the route of the motion that we just voted on, which would be the establishment of the Turk and go forward from there.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Morosky seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion. What was the length?
What is the length?
90 days.
And this would be for, say it in like a sentence, because you said it in like a page.
Yeah. You write in big letters. So I would say that this is a 90-day extension.
For?
For the existing agreement in its entirety to include the prorated lump sum amount that would allow us to ensure that all parties have access to the same information, meaning the people that are going to be voting on it at the city. And again, just making sure at the beginning, not that we're at all questioning our number, but we believe that there are facts that will help people understand the full picture and understand the complexity of the school funding, which if it is going to be included by their request, they also have to understand the facts of that.
Okay, finish your point, yeah.
What sentence?
Okay. Mr. Davis?
I, I just got a couple, one question and one concern. So when Ms. Wagner was speaking, she said something about 90 days would really impact the five-year forecast. So I wanted to know if Member Messer would consider 30 days? And if 30 days, if 30 days, and I think that would be $416,000 if, if I'm doing my math right, 416-666. If 30 days would be amenable to Mr. Messer's extension, I could support that.
That, so he is, he is asking for an amendment to your...
To the 90 days.
Motion.
Yeah, I fully support that.
30-day extension.
And frankly, that would give us more time to set up a Turk if necessary.
Okay. So the, the motion is being amended to be 30-day extension instead of a 90-day? Ms. Bolton?
With pay, with the money coming to us.
That's the only extension we could possibly have.
And just a question, so that there's no issue. Is it possible to say that we would still have 33% as part of that motion? That we're not, we don't want them to think that we're negotiating that number?
No.
No, we, that, that's the first thing that's clear about this. We're holding to our 33%.
Should it be part of his motion, too?
Please, if you could restate your motion to include that, that, yes, very short statement, to include the 33%.
Mike has a point.
Mike? Before we have, just so Mr. Messer doesn't have to do this 18 more times, I just want to sneak this one in. I like the 30 days, it sounds good, it sounds like we're getting somewhere. I would, if Mr. Messer could, in his sentence, and if not, I'd be willing to help because I have a sentence I think might work, but in the sentence, include, and I'm looking at Mr. Hoying to see if this is prudent, y'all as well, of course, if we could include that this, this would be presented today before Cincinnati City Council meets, essentially the second we're done voting, that we are asking if this could be something that would be considered as an official offer after we vote.
I was actually going to suggest that as part of assignments, but it makes sense.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Okay. So, do you want to restate it, so people are clear, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, so with the, with the amendment, so, so I don't know if you went in the amendment to say, "We stand firm on the 33% number that the district has put forward, but in an effort to ensure that we're all operating with the same facts and figures in the complex world of school funding, we would like to extend a 30-day extension with the full components of the current agreement to include payment and the lump sum prorated for that 30-day period."
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
To be delivered today.
To be delivered today.
Delivered today.
As soon as we vote.
All right. That is the motion, we've had, it's been seconded. We've discussed. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I made a motion that was bad.
Oh!
I'm sorry, I really did.
Okay, go on, Ms. Wagner, I think might have it.
Do you have the...
Please, thank you.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Mr. Messer made a motion to, for the school board to stand firm on the 33%, extending a 30-day extension to the full agreement to gain an understanding by all parties on the financial details of the agreement. But that would include the cash payment to the district.
Prorated.
Yes.
Delivered today.
Right. Are we clear? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Okay. So we have worked, yes, Mr. Davis?
Can I ask a question? So, if, if Mr. Hoying makes that offer, the city accepts, do we have to do something today to give Mr. Hoying authority to accept the extension?
We just did.
I think you just have. Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, we're, we've made, we've had our votes, we are moving forward. We may want to clarify the assignment when we get to assignments. Okay, so moving on. Today, and thank you, audience, for hanging in there with us on a long day. We, today is kind of a, it's a, it's a, it's a very special day in many ways, but it's also a very sad day in many ways. As you all know, Mr. Davis is not going to be returning to his seat, but I have a feeling he's going to be haunting us all the time. That's a love word, haunting. But, but our, what we have, and this is typically what we do at the end of an election period, depending on who's coming in new and who's leaving, but we like to recognize the work of Mr. Davis. So what we have here is a resolution that's going to be presented by all board members to Mr. Davis. And at the end of the reading of the resolution, if we could all gather right here and take a picture, and we will present him with a plaque formally, and we'll get the picture developed, so he'll have it as a keepsake. So, Mr. Messer, you get to start.
Yes. A resolution recognizing board member Ozzy Davis III. Whereas on May 25th, 2018, Ozzy Davis III is appointed to the Board of Education to fill a seat vacated by Lannis Timmons, who filled the seat of the late A. Chris Domes, and?
Whereas as a graduate of Cincinnati Public Schools, Mr. Davis has been constantly involved with Cincinnati Public Schools for over 20 years. And whereas Mr. Davis's passion for community and children, along with his experience serving on the Avondale Youth Council and the Queen City Youth Development Program, allowed him to understand the issues impacting Cincinnati's children and families and enabled him to fulfill his responsibilities as a CPS board member, and?
Whereas his commitment to academic achievement led him to serve in 2018 and 2019 on the Student Achievement Committee, whose major tasks were to review issues and proposals relating to program study, curriculum, and instruction, and human resources issues, and?
Whereas in 2019, Mr. Davis also served as the Chair for the Policy Committee, whose responsibilities included review of district policy and procedure revisions and updates in accordance with state law, and?
Whereas his skills were recognized by his appointment as a liaison for activities beyond the classroom. And whereas the children of the Cincinnati Public Schools are the recipients of Mr. Davis's passion for children, commitment to community service, and dedication to quality education for all children.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation to Ozzy Davis III for his invaluable contributions to the education of the children of Cincinnati, and be it finally resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education extends to Ozzy Davis III warm wishes for continued good health, happiness, and success in his future endeavors. I submit this resolution for board approval.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Well, let's do discussion afterwards. How about if we move out front and present?
Yeah, we need to vote.
Well, we, I wanted to have, we can have discussion after the vote. I do want, okay. So, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Just to be clear, Ms. Jones motions and Mr. Messer is seconded, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Did you second the motion?
Yes, it was seconded, I don't remember who.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. That was his last vote of the year.
So let's come out front here? Or how about we just get, you want to gather right here?
Whatever you want me to do.
Let's gather.
Let's get that.
Aw, man.
So, actually, we actually won this, I feel we should be... I'll put my arm around you.
Aww.
And we would like for Mr. Davis to have the first comments.
Mr. Davis? I won't belabor the point. I would just say to Mike, Ryan, Carolyn, Eve, and Melanie, thank you for pointing to me. It's been quite an honor. I'm very appreciative of all the staff, the administration, CFT. Y'all held me down, and the Hamilton County Democratic Party. Very appreciative and honored. And I pledge, I pledge not to leave the room. And God bless you, I love you all.
Thank you. Do board members have comments? Mr. Messer?
Well, I'll just say my relationship started with Mr. Davis many years ago about kids. And how I could start a program that mirrored his in Over the Rhine that he had done for Avondale. And I remember going up to that office and I was a little nervous because it, it was very formal and they, she set the appointment and everything, and then he's been like family ever since, and to my entire family, treated us as if we're part of his own. And so what I could say about that is he cared for children long before he got here, and he's going to care for children long after he leaves this seat temporarily, until we all run again in a couple of years.
Yeah, you've made me late to my 12:30 Rockdale holiday party, so...
I had that too.
Okay, any other board comments? Ms. Bates?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know Ozzy very well when we first started. We had a couple of social occasions, didn't we? And we figured out, we were like family. I don't think we ever differed on a vote. I mean, it was very interesting because our backgrounds are very different, but when we came together, we pretty much were in agreement and, and, you know, we, I'm really going to miss you, I'm going to miss your perspective because you've swayed me on opinions. And, you know, I hope you continue to do that, but you've really enriched my experience as a board member, and I'm sorry to let go of that.
I appreciate you, though.
Okay, and I have, Melanie, and Ms. Bates has mentioned that she has to leave, so whenever, we'll know. But I just want to make sure you got your opportunity to share with Mr. Davis. Mr. Morosky?
I didn't expect to get all emotional. I don't know if it's just I've been sitting here all day, or what it is, or like that. As I said to Ms. Bates, it's like having a war buddy in some ways. We go through a lot up here together and agree and disagree on things, and, God, I'm going to get emotional again. All I wanted to say was, I'm going to miss your voice. You already know this, but you, you represent and speak on behalf of a lot of folks who are well-represented.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. First and foremost, I think it's so important that a community leader and a person that's committed their life to children is in one of these seven seats. But it's even more important that it's been you in that seat. It's a special seat. And you've done honor to it. To Chris, to Lannis, but most importantly, to the kids that you represent aggressively and well and wholesomely. So thank you. I'm not worried about not seeing you because you already told us where you're going to be sitting. And we do know that one of the lessons of politics, and board politics particularly, is that you could have more impact sitting out there sometimes than sitting up here. So I just know that you will be fully empowered. Love you.
Ms. Bowers?
I would just like to say thank you for letting me harass you. When we first crossed paths, I want to say almost, a little bit more than a year ago, harassing you at gamble, gamble basketball games. And when I was first appointed, people in the greater Cincinnati area spoke about Ozzy Davis, not just the city of Cincinnati. Pop Jones especially loves Ozzy Davis and all of his boys. So I want to thank you for embracing me on the board, helping me to learn on policy, giving me direction. Your insight is invaluable, and your representation of the... Your insight is invaluable, and your representation of the, our population of students that are not heard is, is invaluable also. So, thank you, OZ.
Appreciate you.
And, and then finally, I, I just wanna add to that, Mr. Davis, that you have challenged me in many, many different ways, and it's all positive. I think, you know, it, having enjoyed having coffee with you, even though you don't drink coffee, but you and I have had many very in-depth conversations, and I know your thinking is around the schoolhouse as the cornerstone of our community. And I haven't always fully appreciated what you meant by that, and I learned a lot about it in this campaign. And the one thing that I will say that really resonates with me is that that's truly where your talent and your heart is, is in that community. And when I drove along with you on the phone that night, where we both were scared to death, I realized OZ wouldn't have it any other way. And for those of you who don't know, I was on the phone with him and he got pulled over by the police for reaching out to young men on the corner.
One of them little boys got shot, killed too.
Oh, no. See, and OZ, I didn't know why he kept me on the phone, but he kept me on the phone because he trusted me enough, his safety, feeling like his safety was at risk. So that in itself made me really fully realize what you mean. These were kids that you've known all their lives in, in, in whatever they did. And, you know, fortunately, the outcome was good, but I really felt a kinship to you at that point, OZ. And, and not that I hadn't before, but it was different. So I really appreciate you treating me as your sister, and, and I love you, I know that, that you will continue to do the work, and by all means, don't change who you are. You are our community, and we love you for that.
Love you, Carolyn, thank you.
Okay. Now, if we might move on, it's kinda hard to do that, but we're gonna go through our resolutions fairly quickly. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the resolution for board consideration.
A resolution completing the evaluation of Superintendent Catherine Laura Mitchell, whereas on May 9th, 2017, the Cincinnati School Board of Education unanimously selected Catherine Laura Mitchell to become the 27th Superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools, and where we have now completed her annual performance review, I introduce this resolution for passage.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Aye. Mr. Messer? Please present the following resolution for board consideration.
I enthusiastically present a resolution for contract renewal of Catherine Laura Mitchell, Superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools, on behalf of the Cincinnati Board of Education.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Davis, you have the next four resolutions, so you could just start with the first one and keep going.
Resolution adopting new board policy 2272, college credit plus probation and dismissal appeal. I present this resolution as written for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
A resolution amending board policy 6835, audit committee. I present this resolution as written for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
A resolution amending board policy 6836, internal audit. I present this resolution as written for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, discussion?
Yes.
Appreciate the work that the finance has done and policy's done, but I would like to address, I think, page two, one of the bullets that I would like to see go back into this resolution. It's the second red one, if you will, it's the, where we have evaluating the effectiveness and efficiency in which resources are employed. I'd like to put the other, what was crossed out, reiterate, that, reiterate that one, which says ensuring that resources are acquired economically, used efficiently, adequately, protected, and effectively and efficiently employed, in part because the new bullet does not really talk in terms of the acquisition of resources.
Okay. Any other discussion around that? I don't know, are, are you on the audit committee?
Yes.
I have it, but I'm just trying to.
Oh, yeah, that came from audit.
Okay. So you're not on audit committee?
I'm on audit.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I'm on audit. We set this to policy as we should.
I gotcha, okay.
And I'm just saying in this final review of it, I think that.
I gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Sure.
Thank you, so we accept it with the revision.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Resolution amending board policy 8310, public records. I submit this resolution for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, you have the next five. Keep it going.
A resolution amending board policy 8320, personnel files. I submit this resolution for approval.
Okay, discussion?
Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
A resolution amending board policy 8330, student records. I submit this resolution for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye.
A resolution amending board policy 8350, confidentiality. I submit this resolution to the board for approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
A resolution amending board policy 8600.02, transportation of students. I submit this resolution, this policy for, resolution for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been a long day. Second, Mr. Messer seconded. Our discussion?
I have just a couple of questions very quickly, if I could. Just wanted to make sure that, that the mileage piece is the one mile, is that really what we do? I know we do more than, or we do less than the state requires. This is, these are our numbers as to what we do versus what the state requires of us, thank you. And then also, and maybe I'll make an assignment about this, but the other piece, the very last page, or next to last page, number four, it's for extracurricular activities or smart card and all that stuff, that also includes tutoring, does it not? The word says, students involved in extracurricular activities, 712, can we, are we counting tutoring as part of that? Okay, oh, great, great. And then the final one, on the, on the, next to, the last page this time, students transported via public transit vehicles will access the nearest public transit stops established by the public transit authority. Do we have any say about that?
No, actually, that's the city. That's information.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
A resolution approving additional students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2019-2020 school year, I submit this resolution to the board for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do have a very brief report in addition to the superintendent's recommendations. I'm gonna pass out for each board member to receive a copy of the scorecard, the strategic plan scorecard for the first quarter. You will see that we use red, yellow, green, blue to indicate where we were at the end of the first quarter. Green is performances on target, yellow is off target, and then red is significantly, oh, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, blue, milestones are on track. You can see where we are, red, yellow, green, blue, on those items in which we are red, we have basically lead indicators and lag indicators. So if we look at, for example, some of the student achievement progress in terms of those measures, those are lag indicators that quite honestly, we'll get the results in the spring or actually in the summer when the final results come in. However, we are using MAP assessments and other internal assessments to see if we are trending towards meeting those goals. So I didn't want you all to think they're red and we're not paying attention to it, it's just that we acknowledge that there are lead indicators and lag indicators. At any point in time that the board would like a thorough review of each one of these measures, I would be happy to do so at your discretion, when you feel it's appropriate. Yes?
Yes.
I can't remember, how often were you doing this? Quarterly?
Yes, so four times a year.
And what's the, what's the plan for awareness on the, on the website for however we can get this out to the public? This is awesome, by the way.
Absolutely, we will publish this. I wanted to make sure that I put it in the hands of the board members before I gave it out to anyone else. So we'd be happy to publish this at this time.
Good work.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing, I just wanna always highlight our young people. I don't think I have the clicker, so. This is, and I know that I'm not a part of the kudos, this is a kudos for our students, for the board vision, and for our community. So we are celebrating a decade of changes, and the board is primarily responsible for this decade of changes. So we saw through a decade, the facilities master plan implementation, over a billion-dollar facilities master plan to deliver state-of-the-art buildings for our schools and for our communities. We're also celebrating community learning centers. I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's controlling this. Okay. All right, community learning centers, you know, is the board's vision to make our schools community learning centers that would provide services not only for our kids, but their families in the community and the staff members as well, so that is a celebration. In terms of equity, the board had the vision for Vision 2020. In terms of making sure that our elementary neighborhood schools had a rich program like our magnet schools, and so this is a celebration in our decade of changes. And then there's my tomorrow. In terms of making sure that our kids are ready for one of those three career pathways, enroll, enlist, or employed, and this is a part of our equity work, but it's also a part of future Cincinnati Public. Uh-oh, I went too far. Stargill Stadium, and, can you go back for me? Thank you. So in 2019, the TAV Senators were the first football team since 1993 to qualify for the state football playoffs, and so, holler, so we're excited about that. The focus on our men of more, in terms of recognizing that we need to put additional supports around our young people, especially our men, and make sure that they are ready to move into the world as men, and so, more has been within, has been established within the last 10 years. A celebration of languages. Our school district is so proud, and it's, it's just, it makes so much sense that we started our very first presentation off regarding supports for our immigrants and our refugees, and so our district, our board has really supported people who come from different backgrounds and different countries, and so that's a celebration for our district as well. And all of these wonderful things that have happened over the last decade under the board's leadership has led to our growth. Remembering that the facilities master plan originally provided by the state said that we would only have 20-something thousand kids, and here we are, close to 37,000 students. It would be remiss of me not to mention that within the last decade, actually last year, Cincinnati Public Schools was identified as one of the best employers in the state of Ohio. And then all of our partnerships with our businesses, the chamber, universities, not sure where my slide is, but this is a celebration and a salute to the last 10 years of Cincinnati Public Schools. And that is my unwritten report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yes.
Just wanted to double check again, like I always do, that the test coordinators that are listed are coming from not Schedule E?
Correct. Budgets that we set up in the testing department.
Thank you.
To save more money for our kids for after-school programming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? We have three seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
Just a question about the passing guard, which I think is 1G maybe, or at least it was. Did we, with the passing guard agreement with the city, right now, have we reviewed all the places that they're located with the city?
We have looked at where we had some vacancies at the beginning of the school year to try to make sure that we could get all those vacancies covered. I still believe, though, that we have a vacancy near, I wanna say, the Rothenberg School, but Sarah Chumba Oliver is aware of it and is working on it.
Okay, and this is just for a little while, right? Through June?
Yes.
Please, Dan.
It's actually a three-year agreement.
So we can renew?
It can be, yes.
So we can also not renew?
Thank you.
Okay. Good, good clarification on that. Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton? Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Inquiries and updates, Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bolton, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Bates had to leave, but she was going to update and talk a little bit about a previous idea that she had related to the board and the superintendent attending this council of Great City Schools Leadership Institute. I don't have any information on it, yes.
So I went this year, and it's fantastic, and I was the only board member who, who was solo, and I, it was great for me, and I think the, the school boards who were there together, you know, with their superintendent, was really valuable. So I just can speak to the effectiveness of it, it was really great, I think it'd be a cool thing for all of us to do if we could, and I learned a lot. And, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea. I can give you specifics if you want, but we've been here four hours, I don't know if you wanna.
Well, how about if we just? My concern would be the aggregate cost for all of us to go. I don't know. I don't know how people feel about that.
It's good.
So, I'm interested in hearing whether it, is it, did you, you said you felt like we would benefit from it as a board?
I thought it was extremely valuable, and a lot of, at least when I was there this summer, I don't think it's going to be different. I can't imagine it would be, was a lot around the decision-making process, who owns what, you know, a lot of the things that we talk about a lot in a philosophical sense already, where does the administration and the board begin? I would never in a million years speak for administration, but I'm sure they would probably like, if we all kind of sat down and went through all this together. We were, the professors were amazing. And, you know, you have a lot of time to spend with each other and work through exercises and really just kind of get down to the nitty-gritty of how are, how do you make decisions on behalf of so many kids with seven elected people and a professional staff and not step on each other's toes and let egos get out of the way, just to be blunt? And it was a health, it was extremely healthy, and I know it was valuable. Columbus is the closest district that was there. I know Dallas, my friends in Dallas are still sort of vibing really well from it. So, it is a lot of money, though, and so that is, that would be my only concern as well. It is a lot of money to send all of us.
And then I'm asking Ms. Davis or Ms. Bruckner, when is the deadline for confirming for this?
I can't give you the deadline of this year. I have to say, I don't know.
Okay. So, what is the board's pleasure?
Ben wants to go.
Who wants to go?
I would like to go.
Okay. Okay. Are you interested?
Yes, I'm interested, but again, I think when you put all the money together, this is just registration, there's hotel, there's airfare.
Right.
I don't know how that communicates to the public when we're going to have to have budget cuts to be able to do the things we're going to have to do.
I share that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think this is one that potentially there are some community partners that might be willing, and I know that was part of their advertisement, that other cities were able to find resources by some of their community supporters that helped offset that.
So, you want to be in charge of the?
Fundraising?
Okay. So, what we'll do, why don't we go ahead and make sure that our names get submitted? That's one thing. We really need to see what the full package would cost us and put it in front of us so we can see it for our next meeting. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other inquiries and updates? Just a reminder that I, if you haven't already submitted any items for the board work session, I'd like to get that out to you for your review and comment by the end of this week. So, if you could please send that in to the staff, I'd appreciate that. And a reminder of the organizational meeting at 6:00 on the 7th or the 6th?
Six.
Six or the 7th?
Six.
Six. Okay. I saw 7 somewhere. But on the 6th, and making sure that folks know, if you want to bring your families, you're more than welcome to do it if you're going to be sworn in again. And Ben will, is going to bring his family as well. Okay. Any other inquiries and updates? Okay. Assignments?
Yeah.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Messer and Mr. Morosky.
Mine is just, it's fairly basic, but just to our board staff, if we could get our first half meetings on the calendar, and then maybe to work with Lauren's team, I know a couple of us talked about, there's just other events that we'd like to know about, so if they could get her calendar and put on those things where board members might be welcomed or invited, so we can get those on the calendar as well.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
Just a couple assignments. Should be no surprise. One is, so in conversations, in the course, the board has received memos regarding situation on the buses, the data in Westside Campus, and some concerns of students feeling unsafe. And the superintendent has outlined amazing strategies and investments we've already made to make things better. I would just like to offer two potential assignments or suggestions, and maybe these are happening already. I talked to Lieutenant Isaac, not Chief Isaac, Lieutenant Isaac, who works with Metro